The following program is a production of Ho'oeke Kauai Community Media.
Aloha and welcome to this special series of interviews with our Kauai County Council candidates. I'm Lexi Jones, Vice Chair of Ho'oeke Community Television.
And I'm Mark Periello, President at the Kuaia Chamber of Commerce. We're honored to bring you these conversations, giving each candidate the opportunity to share their vision for our island.
Today, we'll be speaking with Addison Bulisane, who's eager to share his ideas and plans for our community. These interviews are an important part of our democratic process, giving you the chance to learn about who's running and why.
Welcome, Addison. Yeah, we're happy to have you here.
Hello. Aloha. Thank you so much for having me.
Yeah, aloha. Our hope is that these conversations will inspire you to engage in the process and to vote. Every voice matters and your vote is crucial in shaping the future of Kauai.
So let's dive in. Please join us in welcoming Addison Bulisane.
Hello again.
Aloha.
I think I went off script there. Sorry, Lexi.
It's okay. It's exciting.
The first question is please tell our audience about yourself and why you are taking on the kuliana of leadership in our community.
Awesome. Thank you so much for allowing me to share a little bit about myself and be with you guys today. Well, most people already know that I'm born and raised here on Kauai. Went to Kauai High School right here and graduated in 2004. Moved back home about 11 years ago, started my practice as a chiropractor. And after practice during COVID, you know, what was happening with our community, I decided to put my hat in the ring to serve as a council member, just so I can help on that level utilizing my experience being born and raised here and also as a small business owner and a community organizer here with all the things that we love. But recently, a little bit about myself, I'm wearing this brace because I just recovered from surgery, doing much better. And what I'm super proud of right now, which will be for the rest of my life, is that I am a father now with a five-month-old named Zenith. And that has reshaped my purpose and my driven in why I've decided to run again for council. Because now I get to put the lens of dad. And before it was an exercise of dreaming for our community and dreaming for my family without kids. But with kids, you look at the world a little bit different. You look at it in a more minute level. You look at details differently. You look at the big picture differently. And ultimately, it's, I think, what every parent out there hope for and want to work on for within their family. But if they are affecting the community, they try to do this for their kids. And that's where I'm at right now. I am looking at Kila'a, Zenith, right now and hoping that I do enough work at the council that he can keep calling Kauai home now as a young folk, but hopefully into his future and hopefully coming back. And so that's the kind of legacy I want to leave for all of our families. I want them to know that that's the vision that is holding myself in this position and why every day I show up to as a council member to serve you guys.
Great.
Thank you, Addison.
Well, we're moving into our first topic of conversation is our housing affordability. Kauai faces a significant challenge in providing affordable housing for its residents. The demand for affordable and workforce housing continues to outpace supply, while rising house costs and the prevalence of off-island investment exacerbate the issue. The community has been exploring various strategies to address these challenges, including increasing the supply of affordable housing, providing rental assistance, and supporting community land trusts. Given the ongoing housing crisis on Kauai, what specific strategies would you prioritize to increase housing affordability? And how would you work to implement these strategies?
That's a great question and something that we were working on during the first term for myself and hopefully continuing on in the second term. The big piece that we all experience is that the rising costs of land. And the second piece is the rising costs to build. And so we can affect that at the council level on the cost side by looking at different ways that we can provide or look at ways that we can acquire resources to then give back to the community. One way is to look at acquiring certain pieces of land that the county can purchase or get to. And then returning it and partnering with nonprofits, local organizations, so that we can provide affordable homes to our community. I think that's one piece that our community and our council is looking to really look at as an opportunity. But one of the biggest challenges is that our county has become the largest housing developer on the island. And that should never ever be a process that I think in our community where the biggest work is being done by the government. It should always be a partnership with government, with all of our other partners. And so really this year is looking at how we can enable a way for our nonprofits, for our local businesses, so that we can enable them to help build without being a barrier. And that's one of the challenges in some of our systems is that oftentimes we create these regulations and ideas to protect our community, but also we're creating more time and cost to the process. And so I'm looking to tackle some of those two big, there's two big things that I'm looking to tackle. Hopefully getting it accomplished this year or hopefully if I get reelected to finish next year.
Thank you, Addison. So I have a follow-up question. So you mentioned sort of regulation and permitting, you didn't say permitting, but that type of thing is one of the barriers for the private sector involvement in affordable housing and building workforce housing. Another issue that sort of causes a lot of people to shy away from Kauai is sort of the not in my backyard component. You know, there are a lot of folks that, right, it's interesting to me, they're the same folks that want affordable housing for everybody. But when it comes right down to it, not in my neighborhood. How do we sort of move past that so that we can get some more projects off the ground?
Yeah, it's one of those difficult things that I think when we talk to our community, it's a resounding yes when we say in the room, if we had 10 people, they would say, yes, we absolutely need more homes for our local people, our working class. At the same time, that same community will also say, but maybe not where we have a yard for myself or a shared park. And so we got to get back with the community and really look back to how it was done in the past, which most of the homes that people are experiencing was the same people that said, yes, I need that home. Yes, we want me to develop that for myself so that we can have a future. And remember that time when the community came and rallied for them and then remember that now. And I think we forgot. We mostly forgot because I think our community, some of us have gotten comfortable because you attain a certain level of success and we're okay where we are. And so we're at that level where we need to communicate with our communities. Like we also now have to kokua our grandchildren, our children, and our children's childrens that come in the future so that they can have the same privileges that you have now. And we see that every day. It's the same conversations. And we need to remember, we're just trying to get back to community living like what we used to have so that we can keep calling Kauai home.
There you go. Thank you. Next topic is economic diversification. Kauai's economy, as you know, has long relied on tourism, which leaves the island vulnerable to economic downturns, as we saw during the pandemic. There's a growing need to diversify the economy to create a more resilient and sustainable economic and more economic opportunity for our residents. Potential sectors for diversification include agriculture, technology, healthcare, renewable energy, and the arts, to name a few. What is your vision for economic diversification on Kauai and how are you going to move from talk to action?
I love it. Well, the biggest thing that I get to do as a council member is to work with other organizations like the Chamber, and other nonprofits and community members and our small businesses to tackle this issue. The biggest opportunity where we are working on at the council level, at every level, from the federal to state, is enable organizations or institutions that already utilize certain services or products to then now choose local and reducing those barriers at the county, state, and federal levels. So the biggest example is ag, which is farm-to-table is what we need to close that gap. And oftentimes when we think farm-to-table, given an example, AHK, which is our Kilauea Ag Community Center. There's several gaps that prevent them to service our bigger institutions like our schools, like our hospitals. But they are serving some institutions like our food bank. And so the ultimate goal for us on the county side is to see if there's any barriers in that level that we can remove or shorten or fast-track or create faster ways for that service and product to be accomplished so that we don't have those costs in effect, basically cost barriers that make things more difficult. And really, the biggest piece that we as counties, since we work with our community so closely, is to then also advocate for these programs and these ideas at our state and federal level, which has a broader, I guess, broader effect on these issues. Because oftentimes you'll hear, and it's not the funnest thing to say, when someone asks me about a problem, is that, oh, that barrier is at the state or that barrier is at the federal level. I'm going to hands off that. I think it's really important for us as council members, since we're on the ground with everyone, to go advocate on these issues and make these things possible. One fine example is the work that's being done at Kilauea Agricultural Community Center. For example, what they're doing with the Hawaii Food Bank, getting food directly to our community that is bought from the Hawaii Food Bank, from AHK, then delivered to our kupuna. I think that is a prime example. If we could do that at our school levels, at every school, and then we look at our hospitals. That in turn is keeping the local dollars here, empowering our agricultural sector. But then it fills all the other gaps, like drivers. We need people that can be farmers and other pieces that in that place that will happen. And then secondarily, it's to no surprise that a lot of the work now is remote. And it allows for small businesses to be more nimble, but it also allows certain things to be accessible to certain businesses, like small businesses. So we're talking about reaching for other people that work from certain sectors to help other certain sectors. So I think empowering that in our chamber and empowering that with our small business so they can get access to that without the barriers that come with it. So that's probably my two main things.
All right, cool. Thank you.
Great. And moving forward into climate change and environmental sustainability. Kauai is particularly vulnerable to the impacts of climate change, including coastal erosion, extreme weather events, and threats to natural habitats. Kauai has explored various strategies, including coastal protection, renewable energy adoption, waste reduction, and sustainable agriculture. How would you address climate change and promote environmental sustainability on Kauai?
I think the biggest place where we can as a team, as a community, is to do everything that we need to do at a global level, but at the home level. One fine example is how what we do with our waste. If you think about what you do at home right now, how much do you actually throw away that go into the landfill that is causing a certain crisis that we're in as a community, which is that we're running out of space at our current landfill? The biggest opportunity where oftentimes when I talk to people about that question is looking at food waste and how much we're actually throwing into the landfill and how much that could be diverted, say, by composting it. And that entire system is something that we do not have in the larger level, but we have at the local level, like what Compost Kauai is doing. So we look at climate change in those small habits that can reflect in the bigger habits. Like how can our government look at that as a process to be collecting and diverting within our systems? And so you add that with recyclable things and really adding those pieces to that pie. Lastly, besides the landfill and addressing those issues, when we're talking about climate change, a lot of it is really how is our systems are set up. Mainly, transportation, energy are the two biggest pieces in how we utilize energy and how we use transportation. The biggest challenge right now for us is that a lot of the people who do work in our sectors end up traveling from elsewhere and from Leihue into Leihue. And one of those things are causing our traffic problems and affecting our climate change because we're all in most likely gas cars and systems in that place. And so what we're looking at on the county level and the county council level is trying to enable people to have other choices, such as traveling within our bus system or choosing electric vehicles or vehicles that can no longer use fossil fuels so that we can make a bigger impact in our community, but also show the world that it's totally possible to do it and solve these issues in our small tiny island. By affecting our tiny island, it can hopefully inspire others to do the same.
All right. So I think you already answered this question, but you can add some more if you'd like. While visitors contribute to traffic congestion on Kauai, the surge in traffic when schools returned in August underscores the impact of our resident commuters on the island's transportation system. In addition to infrastructure improvements, Kauai has been exploring various efforts to reduce traffic congestion, such as expanding bus services, developing safer bike lanes, encouraging, or any bike lanes, encouraging walking through improved sidewalks and pathways. However, our island's rural nature and the dependence on cars persists. And so my question is on this next page here. Give me a second. What solutions to ease traffic congestion on Kauai resonate most with you? And how can we reduce the resilience on single occupancy vehicles and expand alternative transportation methods that are accessible and appealing to our residents?
So this is a great question. There's two things that I want to touch on. The first, probably the most close to my heart, is that we got to return back to community living. My favorite thing to do when my grandma was alive was to sit down and listen to stories that she would talk about our community here in Leihue. And she used to talk about how Rice Street was so rambunctious, like everyone walked from their home, which is now where I'm currently living in Molokoa, and enjoyed the town, walked back home, saw all your neighbors, knew everyone. And that was normal in each town core center, in Hanapepe, in Kalahale, in Princeville, and all the way in Hyanna. And we've moved away from that as a community over the course of the years, where now the focus is spending more time in our cars instead of living. And I think one of the challenges for this answering this first part is that when we talk about returning to community living, that means living in your town core centers. The emphasis on my part right now is focusing on our town core centers where everyone can live, work, and play in the same space. And by doing that, you reduce all that time that you're doing to travel. Instead of driving an hour into town to buy your thing and then another hour to go back home to go to soccer practice and then back hour. So you're talking about three, four hours just driving. Imagine just spending those three, four hours walking around town, doing all the things that you need to do and enjoy community living. And so that's the major part. So focusing in making sure there's residential opportunities so that our community can live in the same space. And then secondly, when we're talking about transportation, besides focusing our town core centers, we have to make each part of the town core to be able to do that. And so not focusing on just one area. And so it's really important for all the projects that we're focusing right now, from Limo Ola in Elale to the things that we're working on in Kilauea, so that every part of our community can do that same experience. And so if we can do that and then add the certain pieces, which is allowing communities to travel in multimodal situations, which is cars, not cars, but allowing people to travel by bike, travel utilizing our bus system. It just gives us options so that we can live healthy in the way that we used to live. And I think that's one of the things we forgot too, is that this is how we used to live. Let's get back to that times.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Agriculture and food sustainability. Agriculture has the potential to play a larger role in Kauai's economy by providing local food, preserving open space, and contributing to economic diversification. However, challenges such as limited infrastructure, general disinterest from younger generations, and the need for startup financing persist. What is your vision for a thriving agriculture sector on Kauai? And what actions would you prioritize as a county council member to support this vision?
One of the biggest challenges for farmers and anyone in ag is the cost to do business. And so my emphasis this term, if we elected or if we can get it done before elections are over, is to reduce those costs, reduce those barriers. And so one of the things I talked about in the earlier questions was to also address the demand side. The tough thing about doing farm work or doing agriculture is that it has to make money sense. And in order for it to make money sense, one, we drive down costs, but the other part is making sure that there's demand. And so if every institution was in demand of local food, if they just decided right now that they're only buying local carrots, local onions, local tomatoes, then at that point, ag could boom in a way that we'd hope to because there's demand for it. And so we also have to change the structures and the systems that incentivize going outwardly to buy these cheaper or ways to address these issues and really focus in. Like the work that they're doing in the website and some of the things that we have for our local agriculture there. In my point of view, we're looking to deregulate these issues that make it so expensive for our local farmers to serve straight to our institutions, straight to people. And then secondly, it's empowering our local community to get interested in these things. One initiative I really love that's happening in downtown Leihue is community gardens. And the work that the community is doing right down the street from here, from Ho'oeke, where the community is already investing themselves into a small piece of land to grow food for themselves. That little work, what we used to do in community living, then creates that inspiration so that younger people are part of families that already do that and no longer sees that as some other thing, that not part of their lives. Then that interest can come back the way it used to be because it's just how we grew up. And I remember the times that that was how I lived and we still do that at home where we have two gardens. And we don't buy green onions. We don't buy eggplant. We don't buy potato shoots because that's all grown at our home. And if we can get back to that community living, then that interest can build. And it's no longer something that we don't think is possible here. It's just something that is born with the combination by creating more demand. And that's where we have more successful farmers and local ag that can happen in our community.
All right. Thank you, Addison. So next, destination management. How familiar are you with the DMAP?
The DMAP is my, I guess, Bible.
All right, there you go. Then let me ask the question. The Kauai Destination Management Action Plan, DMAP, aims to manage tourism in a way that benefits residents and visitors alike by promoting sustainable practices and enhancing community engagement. What are your top one or two priorities for tourism on Kauai, especially as they relate to DMAP?
Well, so the DMAP came out in 2020, I believe, and it's up to this year, 2024. And I think they're in the process of doing the new one. Really, the first top three objectives that is listed in DMAP is my emphasis. Really, the two biggest ones is looking at the quality of living of our community and protecting arts and culture of the community. And so that's where I take my lead and I follow as much as possible. But there's other objectives that I feel like are as important, but I try to narrow myself there. But mainly, the biggest one is that we really got to empower our local arts and culture, specifically supporting our native Hawaiian endeavors so that the place that visitors come to visit understand that it's not tourism or visitor experiences that they're buying in. They're actually buying the experience of a culture. And that's exactly what's happening. And that reinvestment needs to be equally given back so that the arts and culture of the community that we are part of are equally invested too. And so it's important for us to really understand that we're not selling a hotel stay or what kind of car you're driving. We're selling what the experience is, which is Hawaii and the arts and culture. And so as much as we can reinvest into the community in that space. And then secondly, with that, directly supporting all the local hardworking families in all these parts of the industry. So that can have the livable wage. Because right now, I mean, what happened recently, about two days ago, where a whole group of union workers had to strike so they can have fair wages. I think it's important for us to keep supporting our workers so that they can keep calling Kauai home.
Thank you.
Great. And last but certainly not least, is there anything else you would like to share with our viewers?
Yeah, about eight weeks ago, as I mentioned, I had a life-altering experience, which was emergency surgery removing a tumor in my spine that was pinching on my spinal cord. Basically, one day I woke up and I couldn't walk. And in that process of getting the care to get back to where I am, which I can walk now, you know, there's things that I got to think about and you don't really think about until you get these near-death experiences. The last thing I wrote before having the surgery, I wrote that I love my life, I love everyone in it, and I love what I get to do. And I was thinking at that moment when I wrote those things, that might be the last things I write and someone might read that. Well, after the successful surgery, I got to reevaluate life. You generally do that when you get these experiences. And I realized so much that all the time that I've spent here on Kauai was about serving our community in every single aspect of my life in any way possible. But one of the things I learned about that process was that you can't really take care of someone else or a place that you love until you take care of yourself. And these last few weeks have been really hard to really evaluate the ideas of what I think is important to give. And so one thing I just want to leave with everyone that is watching this is that it's really important that you do get involved, that you do go out to vote, make sure you volunteer, your nonprofits. But if you're not taking care of yourself, you can't really serve. And so it's really important that everyone who watches this, check yourself, check everything within yourself that you are taking care of yourself. I'm advocating for self-care. I want to make sure that you're healthy and you're happy and you're getting all the things that you need so that when you serve and show up in the places that you are, you're in a greater capacity to do that. And really thank everyone that do take care of themselves and advocate for others and help others so that we can keep Kauai Kauai and keep calling it home for the rest of our lives. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Addison. A pleasure to have you with us today.
Thank you.
Good job.
So mahalo nui loa for joining us today. We hope these candidate interviews give you a clearer understanding of where they stand on the issues and their vision for our beloved island.
We'd like to take a moment to acknowledge the incredible support that made this series possible.
First, a big thank you to the Hawaii Crop Improvement Association.
We also want to express our gratitude to the Hawaii Lodging and Tourism Association, the Kauai chapter, for their continued partnership.
A special thank you goes out to Ho'oeke, Kauai Community Television, for providing the platform to bring these important discussions to you.
We are also grateful for our Kauai Island Utility Cooperative for their unwavering support of our community initiatives.
And thank you to KKCR, Kauai Community Radio, for helping us reach more of you across the island.
We couldn't have done this without the support of Kikaha Agriculture Association, who have been champions of local engagement.
And last but certainly not least, a heartfelt thanks to Meridian Pacific for their generous support of this effort.
Remember, your voice matters and make it heard. Be sure to vote in the upcoming election and help shape the future of Kauai.
Thank you again for watching. Ahoe'e ho.
Aloha and welcome to this special series of interviews with your Kauai County Council candidates. I'm Lexi Jones, the Vice Chair of Ho'oeke Community Television.
And I'm Mark Periello, President at the Kuaia Chamber of Commerce. We're honored to bring you these conversations, giving each candidate the opportunity to share their vision for our island's future.
Today, we'll be speaking with Errol Konashiro, who's eager to share his ideas and plans for our community. These interviews are an important part of our democratic process, giving you the chance to learn about who's running and why.
And our hope is that these conversations inspire you to engage in the process and to vote. Every voice matters and your voice is crucial in shaping the future of Kauai.
So let's dive in. Please join us in welcoming Errol to the conversation.
Hey, Errol.
Thanks for having me.
Yes.
Glad to be here with you. So let's dive in to the first question. So please tell the audience about yourself and why you are taking on the kuliana of leadership in our community.
Yeah. So again, my name is Errol Konashiro. I was born and raised here on Kauai. I went to Koloa Elementary School. I graduated from Kauai High School. And I went off to college at Pacific University in Forest Grove, Oregon. Graduated from there and then I worked in Oregon for four years at a CPA firm. While there, I earned my CPA, became a certified public accountant. And after four years, I had to decide, you know, what I wanted to do. Did I want to stay up there? Did I want to move home? And eventually I made the decision to move home, be closer to family. And so I came home. I worked for a grow farm company for almost 14 years doing property management. Also, I helped my dad at our ranch. When I first moved home, we had about 300 sheep on the ranch. Now we manage almost 1,200 sheep. So the herd's grown a lot. I'm married. I have two girls, five and three, and we have one on the way in October, another girl. So I'll be completely outnumbered soon.
Yeah, you will.
In addition to that, I'm heavily involved in the community. I'm the president for Koloa Plantation Days. I'm the vice president for Kiwanis. I'm a treasurer for Ainaho Okupo Kilauea. I'm a treasurer for East Kuaio Soil and Water Conservation. And I'm a board member for KEO. Oh, and I also ran for council and was on the county council for eight years. I was the budget and finance chair, controlled the budget or headed the budget for eight years. I was a council and a council chair for four years. And so I reached my term limit. I had to sit out this last term, but now I can run again. And so that's what I'm doing. Your question, why am I running or taking on this leadership responsibility? And I think it does come down to, you know, feeling responsible. Again, you know, I was born and raised here and I want to preserve the values and the lifestyle that I grew up with. And you know, there's a lot of people that are probably smarter than me or maybe better at me at being on county council. But it's hard to get elected. And if the voters have the confidence in me representing them on the county council, then it is my responsibility to be there and try to preserve the values that we all grew up with. And for me, I feel like I can do that. I'm a person that can try and preserve those values that we grew up with. And you know, Kauai is gonna grow, but it's a matter of how are we gonna grow.
Thank you, Errol.
Great. Well, diving into our first hot topic of the conversation, of course, is housing affordability. Kauai faces a significant challenge in providing affordable housing for its residents. The demand of affordable workforce housing continues to outpace supply, while rising housing costs and the prevalence of off-island investment exacerbate the issue. The community has explored various strategies to address these challenges, including increasing supply of affordable housing, providing rental assistance, and supporting community land trusts. Now, the question is, given the ongoing housing crisis on Kauai, what specific strategies would you prioritize to increase housing affordability? And how would you work to implement these strategies as a member of county council?
Yeah, so the whole time I've been running or have ran, housing has always been an issue. And I think we've done a lot on the forefront of low-income housing. You know, there's projects. You know, there's projects in Koloa, Kauai, there's Limaola in Elee Elee, there's Waimea Huakai in Waimea. There's new projects coming up. Oh, there's the project in Uluko. There's Kialaula, which was a project that took actually homeless people off the streets and into homes. And there's a bunch more projects that are coming online also. Limaola has a lot more phases to go. Port Allen has a project that Makani is working on. Out here in Lihui, Craig Watase has a project right across Taco Bell that's going on. And I believe the CPB building near the county building also is a project that's going on. And all those projects are going to be low-income housing. And so as I said back, I think we've done a lot of work on low-income housing. But the housing that we need to concentrate on and really focus on coming up is workforce housing. And that is housing for people that make too much money to afford, too much money to be considered low-income, and don't make enough money to purchase whatever the housing market price is now, like 1.2 million, 1.3. They can probably afford the mortgage, but they can't afford the down payment, you know? And not a lot of people can afford a $1.3 million house or whatever median house price is right now. And so that is the market that we're really gonna have to concentrate on. And, you know, I think we have opportunities for that. We purchased land in Waimea, Waimea 400. We purchased land in Kiloweia and condensed some land in Kiloweia for the county. And I think on those types of projects, we're really gonna have to control what we want to see. And in that case, it's gonna be, we want to see housing for these people that are getting left out. It's, you know, basically the middle-class families that are working two jobs, can't move out of their parents' house because they can't find a house. The supply is short or the housing's too expensive. And that's really what we're gonna have to focus on. And, you know, the county's probably gonna have to pay some money to try to get that type of housing in there. You know, other things we can work on is also providing the infrastructure, because I think we're really lacking infrastructure to get housing where we need it also. We don't control water, but we need to work really closely with water and making sure that, you know, when we're planning, where do we want housing? We actually have water available for that housing, because you can plan all you want for a certain area. If there's no water available, then you're pretty much back to square one. And I believe wastewater too is another one that we really got to concentrate on and start putting more resources towards, to really getting housing going and for that specific type of housing that we want.
So I'm gonna ask a follow-up question. So there are folks on island who, like all of us, right, want to preserve what makes this place so incredible and so magical. But they do it in a way, in such a way that they sue, right, to prevent those water pipes from going in, to prevent the infrastructure from expanding. And I wonder if you have any thoughts on how the county can sort of work with folks to sort of maybe bring them along, or how we engage in folks who are suing the county to prevent the infrastructure which is necessary for the housing?
I think the public has to realize what's going on. You know, those projects aren't preventing this big development. They're preventing affordable housing right now. I think the projects called Kohealoa and Hanamalu, they have a whole nother phase that they can do, but they don't have water because their project got sued. And so I think, you know, the public really has to wake up and understand, you know, what some of these groups are trying to do. They're they're preventing all housing, and that's completely exacerbating the problem we're already in, where we don't have any supply. And so we really got to understand, you know, what are the ramifications of, you know, groups that may be fighting certain things like that? And are we okay with that? Are we okay with saying, fine, let's not upgrade any of our water systems? But then we're not gonna have any water for housing. And we got to understand that, and we need to be okay with it. On the other hand, I mean, for me, I'll always fight for us to, you know, reasonably try and upgrade our infrastructure. You know, we've went through all of these community plans. And, you know, with the community plans, we worked with many people in those communities, and we focused on, we know that Kauai needs to grow. We know that we need housing. So a lot of the community plans wasn't on, we don't want any housing. We don't want any infrastructure. Where do we want this housing? Where do we want to see growth? And that's where a lot of these community plans focused on and were passed. And so groups that come in and then try to protest water going to a certain area need to understand that that was all part of a big plan to try and focus on what the community wanted. The community wanted housing in Lihui, in the town core. And so, you know, we really, yeah, we really do maybe need to be a little more vigilant too on those types of things as a community, as government, as a public.
Thank you, Errol. I'm the next question.
Yes.
So economic diversification is the next topic. Kauai's economy, as you know, and as all of our viewers know, has long relied on tourism, which leaves the island vulnerable to economic downturns like we saw during the pandemic. There are, there is a growing need to diversify the economy to create more resilient and sustainable economic opportunities for our residents. Potential sectors for diversification include agriculture, technology, healthcare, renewable energy, and the arts. What is your vision for economic diversification on Kauai? And which sectors do you believe hold the most promise for our island's future?
Economic diversification. It's a tough one, because I think we've always talked about it. And then during COVID, we realized, I mean, we already knew how dependent we were on the tourism industry. COVID completely showed us how vulnerable we were to the tourism industry. Now that we've recovered, I still don't think we're gonna be able to completely get away from that. You know, tourist dollars don't only support hotels. It supports all these businesses that go along with it. It supports restaurants. It supports, you know, activities that people take part in, boat tours, all these other businesses. And so when it comes to economic diversity, I don't think we're gonna be able to completely remove ourselves from tourism. We need that tourist dollar to come in. We saw during COVID, Kauai cannot sustain itself. If it was just Kauai, 70,000 residents or 75,000 residents, we're not able to earn enough and spend enough money to keep every business open. You know, the tourism dollars coming in helps supplement a lot of these businesses from us, from us residents having to spend. And so when it comes to economic diversity, I think, you know, it's tough. Agriculture I do see as a strong sector. You see a lot of, you see people like maybe Will Lidgate, who's, you know, really taking his product a lot further, doing, he took his chocolate farm tours to now his chocolates winning all these awards. I think that's what it's gonna take for us to be able to kind of release ourselves. We're gonna have to try and market our products outside of Kauai, whether it's on Oahu, within the state, or to the mainland or international. Because, I mean, Kauai is only so small. You know, whether that's in technology and you're able to do something from home, whether it's agriculture where you're providing a special niche product to Japan that someone wants, or you're creating a product that someone else wants. I think that's the way that we're gonna have to diversify. We're gonna have to look outside of Kauai and see what type of markets can we touch outside of Kauai. Maybe it's online sales, maybe it's value-added products. But I think that that's one of the only ways. And then, of course, looking back at what services does Kauai need now? You know, there's lots of businesses right now that can't even find workers.
Right, right.
So, you know, I mean, there is opportunity to work. It's just what do you want to do?
Thank you.
Great. Well, continuing forward, the next topic would be climate change and environmental sustainability. Now, we know Kauai is particularly vulnerable to the impacts of climate change, including coastal erosions, extreme weather events, and threats to natural habitats. Kauai has explored various strategies, including coastal protection, renewable energy adoption, waste reduction, and sustainable agriculture. So the question would be, how would you address climate change and promote environmental sustainability on Kauai?
Yeah, so as far as if I was on the county council, I don't necessarily think it's something legislative that we would be passing laws on. I think there's some things we can do and work with the planning department or whatever on, you know, maybe making houses higher in flood zones or not letting houses be built so close to, so close to the coastline. But at the end of the day, I think the way that we battle climate change is to just make our individual communities more resilient. You know, we're, we've already saw how much, how many more flood events we've had, major fire events, natural disasters. I think the best way that we can be prepared is to look at our individual communities, make sure that they have the resources they need. You know, that if they're cut off, they can survive as long as they need to before we can get more help there. And I'm also hoping individuals, you know, making, making sure that individuals are prepared for these natural disasters also. So I really think the way, the way we adjust to climate change is by, yeah, creating resilient communities, resilient individuals on Kauai.
Cool. Thank you, Errol. Shifting gears to transportation. While visitors contribute to traffic congestion on Kauai, the surge in traffic when schools resumed in August underscores the impact of resident commuters on our island's transportation system. In addition to infrastructure improvements, Kauai has been exploring various efforts to reduce traffic congestion, such as developing safer bike lanes or any bike lanes, encouraging walking through the improved sidewalks and pathways, and expanding bus services. However, our island's rural nature and our dependence on cars present unique challenges. What solutions to ease traffic congestion resonate most with you? And how can we reduce reliance on single occupancy vehicles and expand alternative transportation methods that are accessible and appealing to residents?
Okay, so I'm not gonna be the traffic expert, because I can tell you, I held sign by KCC one day from four to, I think it was almost 5:30 or six. And there was not a lot of traffic. And I think it was a Thursday. No school. And traffic was very sporadic. I thought it was so weird. Where's a lot of traffic? Where's everybody? Then I held a sign by, before the Kauai Humane Society. I think it was on a Thursday again. And I believe school started again, but again, it's at four to like 5:30. School's already been out at two. And there was a ton of traffic. I don't know why one day had a lot of traffic, one day didn't. But, you know, at the end of the day, how do we resolve our traffic issues? I think, you know, we've been saying it a lot in the past few years. It's, we need to build homes where jobs are so that we can get people to live where they work. So it reduces their commute, their commute, and reduces the amount of traffic on the roads. And I think that's one of the only ways we'll be able to kind of get people away from single-vehicle driving, because, I mean, right now, you have to. If you can only, if you have a house and you can't, if you're living with your parents in Kekaha and you can't find a house anywhere else, there's zero supply and you have to work in Lihui. What else are you gonna do? And, you know, you might have kids that you need to get to a practice. You have to. I'm never gonna fault anybody for having to drive anywhere. I mean, that's the way Kauai is. But, you know, again, it's our responsibility to build within the town cores. Not, not our responsibility to build, but our responsibility to set it up so that we have more homes or the availability of more homes in our town core areas where jobs are, so that we can open up these houses for the working class that I talked about earlier to live and work near the area they're at. It should reduce the amount of traffic. If you have somebody driving from Kapaa to Lihui, and they can actually buy a house in Lihui, you know, you've taken one car off the road right there. And so that would be the solution I can think of. And we've, we've tried a bunch of things to do that. It may not have always worked. You know, we tried it just here on Rice Street. We passed a law to allow, you know, development to develop to max density. They don't need to do affordable housing, you know, trying to encourage a developer to build. We haven't really seen that come to fruition yet. But, you know, hopefully, we'll get to see some, something like that happen. And again, you know, with, with these developments coming online soon, the, the development at the CPB building on the corner of the county, the development across from Taco Bell. Hopefully, and I know a lot of these housing projects are starting to focus on, you know, what is our market? They start categorizing, you know, our first market that we want in these units are people that work in the area or, you know, people that live in Lihui or, you know, and it's gonna start working out that way. Of course, there's, you know, the income requirements, but it's also gonna be, where do you work? And I think that's the way that we're gonna be able to kind of tackle and address that.
Great. Thank you.
Thanks. All right. Moving into our next topic of conversation is agriculture and food sustainability. Agriculture has the potential to play a larger role in Kauai's economy by providing local food, preserving open space, and contributing to economic diversification. However, challenge such as limited infrastructure, general disinterest from younger generations, and the need for startup financing persists. What is your vision for a thriving agricultural sector on Kauai? And what actions would you prioritize as county council member to support this vision?
Yeah, so I think agriculture is an important aspect of our life here on Kauai. I mean, mostly, everything we have now has revolved around agriculture. And, you know, my family's been in agriculture for many years. And so, you know, that's an industry I'm always gonna support. I think as far as actions I would take, I think my philosophy on agriculture is I'm not gonna take any actions. I'm gonna let farmers do what they need to do. Too many times, we try to over legislate on farming. Too many times, as we mentioned, there's repercussions on groups that are, you know, protesting ag project on ag land or, you know, protesting water that they want to go out to a stream versus going to agriculture. And I think my job is gonna be to advocate for the farmer and the rancher. And, you know, it's not that they're gonna take all the water. It's not that they're gonna be unreasonable. It's that they need that water. They've been getting that water to survive. And we need to, if we want to see agriculture, they need water. And so we need to continue to advocate for them. We see reservoirs shutting down. You see a lot of the infrastructure and the regulations on reservoirs are getting more and more regulations, more and more costly to maintain. And those are big, they supply a lot of ag farmers with water. And so it's gonna be harder and harder for ag guys to, to survive. You know, you've seen urban drought. There's, there's so many issues with why it's hard for a farmer. You're not even talking about weather and insects and things they can't even control. And so for me, it's always been to support the farmers. And, you know, you see some new farmers coming up. Alun Farms on the west side is doing really well. You know, they came in, they're, you see their produce at Costco, the watermelons. You see their produce at Times, onions, you know. Also, just supporting our, I think the best thing we can do as residents is support the farmers. Go to our farmer's market, support these farmers. You know, they work hard. I live near the farms where a lot of these farmers are. I see them. They, I see them at six in the morning, it's dark, heading to their farm. I see them at 10 at night, it's dark, leaving the farm. And I know that they have to go to this farmer's market on this day. So they're probably, you know, they probably still have to go home and clean their produce and everything and get it ready. And so I think, you know, the best thing we can do is just continue to support these farmers. And yeah, less, less fighting, less fighting on, oh, what are they doing? You know, it's just let these farmers farm. Too many times, people have tried to legislate farmers out of business. And I'm aware of it, and I'll never support that type of legislation.
Thank you, Errol. So destination management. You know, one of the things that we have strived to do as a community and through the Kauai Destination Management Action Plan is to manage tourism in a way that benefits residents and visitors alike by promoting sustainable practices and enhancing community engagement. What are your top one or two priorities for tourism on Kauai? And if elected, how would you support them?
Yeah, so as far as destination management, I, I think we've, the bell's already been rung. And, you know, Su Kanoa has done an awesome job. You know, her job was to bring visitors to Kauai. But her job for the past, I don't know how many years, has been saying, we have too many visitors. And so, you know, I'll support any type of action where we can enhance the quality of life for our residents while still giving the visitors a great experience. And, you know, when I, when I say that, I think of like Ka Beach as a great example. Like, that was a beach I would never go to, because, one, I didn't want to get up really early and drive all the way out there and not have parking. And, two, you get out there and it would be absolutely crazy. There's people everywhere. And I think they've done a great job of how they managed it. You know, it's, and I think it's a great job for everybody involved. It's a great job for the residents who go out there. I'm sure they enjoy it a lot more because there's less people. And I'm sure the visitors also enjoy it, because I can see them getting kind of their experience getting ruined too. And there's too many people out there, not enough parking. You know, people are parking along the sides of the road. So, you know, I think anything we can do to kind of, yeah, get back to, you know, how do we continue to enhance our residents', our residents' experience too, without having visitors take it over? And I think we really got to see that during COVID. I mean, when we didn't have any visitors, you could go to any beach you wanted to, easy. I mean, when we didn't have any visitors, you could go to any beach you wanted to, easy. Unfortunately, you know, that's not gonna be the reality of how we move forward. But again, if we can try to mimic or, you know, do examples like Ka and how we manage it, I, I think everyone will have a better experience. And again, it is about preserving the residents' lifestyle too and quality of life also. I mean, our quality of life prior to COVID, I think it was pretty crazy at that time. You could go to any beach and you could not find parking. And yeah, traffic was a mess. But I think it's all about how do we move forward? How do we manage it? And I think there's a lot of momentum right now on how do we manage this? And before, that wasn't the case. Before, the case was, we're gonna advertise and get as many people here as possible. Now, I think the whole momentum is on how do we manage this? How do we not let it get as crazy as it used to be?
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, as we finish up, is there anything else you wanna share with our viewers?
No, I just wanna say, you know, thank you guys for the opportunity, for having me here. And you know, I just humbly ask, ask for your vote in this upcoming election, you know? I'll do what I've always done. I'll continue to, to work hard for this community and continue to make the best decisions that I can for the island.
Alright, thank you, Errol. Great, great talking to you today.
Really great. Thank you.
Thanks.
Alright, mahalo nui loa for joining us today. We hope these interviews give you a clearer understanding of the candidates and their, their vision for the future of our beloved island.
We'd like to take a moment to acknowledge the incredible support that made this series possible.
First, a big thank you to Hawaii Crop Improvement Association.
We also want to express our gratitude to the Hawaii Lodging and Tourism Association, Kauai Chapter, for their continued partnership.
A special thanks goes out to Hoi Ke, Kauai Community Television, for providing the platform to bring these important discussions to you.
We're also grateful for Kauai Island Utility Cooperative for their unwavering support of our community initiatives.
Thank you to KKCR, Kauai Community Radio, for helping us reach more of you across the island.
We couldn't have done this without Keikaha Agriculture Association, who have been champions of local engagement.
And last, but certainly not least, a heartfelt thanks to Meridian Pacific for their generous support of this effort.
Remember, your voice matters. Make it heard. Be sure to vote in the upcoming election and help shape the future of Kauai.
Thanks again, Errol, and ahuiho.
Ahuiho. Aloha, and welcome to this special series of interviews with your Kauai County Council candidates. I'm Lexi Jones, the Vice Chair of Hoi Ke Community Television.
And I'm Mark Periello with the Kauai Chamber of Commerce. We're honored to bring you these conversations, giving each candidate the opportunity to share their vision for our island's future.
Today, we'll be speaking with Bernard Carvalho, who's eager to share his ideas and plans for our community. These interviews are an important part of our democratic process, giving you the chance to learn more about who's running and why.
Our hope is that these conversations inspire you to engage in the process and to vote. Every voice matters, and your voice is crucial in shaping the future of Kauai.
So let's dive in. Please welcome Bernard to the conversation.
Aloha. So thankful to be here with our team members and just ready to share my knowledge.
Great, yeah, we're happy to have you. And so our first question is, tell the audience a little bit about yourself and why you've chosen to take up the kuliana of leadership in our community.
Yeah, I've been working in community for many, many years, wearing different hats. But as a council member, from being the former mayor to being a civil servant, and then now as a council member, it kind of gives me a good cross balance of everything and understanding. And as a council member, I know we have lots of legislative work to do. But it's all about relationships, right? So I'm totally connected to what we need to do. I'm working closely with my fellow council members. But the bottom line is getting things done for our community, reaching out from Keke to Kupuna. And whatever experiences I've had for myself, I bring to the table, and I'm learning as well. And at the same time, making sure that we get things done for the people that we serve. So as a council member, I look forward to working closely. This is gonna be my third term coming up. And so I'm very thankful for the opportunity to serve.
Alright, great. Thank you.
Well, tuning into a hot topic of conversation is our housing affordability. Kauai faces a significant challenge in providing affordable housing for its residents. The demand of affordable workforce housing continues to outpace supply, while rising house costs and the prevalence of off-island investments exacerbate the issue. The community has been exploring various strategies to address these challenges, including increasing the supply of affordable housing, providing rental assistance, and supporting community land trusts. Now, the question is, given the ongoing housing crisis on Kauai, what specific strategies would you prioritize to increase housing affordability?
Yeah, obviously, housing is a big, big concern for all of us, being born and raised here. And then my own children, you know, I'm so thankful they're able to stay home. But it took a lot of us, similar to my situ, our situation, to keep things moving in our community. I've had the opportunity to be involved in many different housing projects on the island. So it all takes resources, connecting. As a council member, we did several bills to assure that we have at least some sorts of revenue coming in. But when you talk housing, my experience with Kolo Pua and Hanalei and Kanikoa right here in Lihui, you know, and Limaola, all of those projects took partnership, took all different levels pulling resources together from the county to the state, to the federal, to the community. It's all about that. And I know we can talk about housing and all that, but something has to be done now. And the bottom line is the land part of it that we need to secure. And then the infrastructure that needs all the resources first before we even can build anything. And I know that, like from my experience, we've worked in different communities and on different projects. The big one coming up right here in Lihui is with Grow Farm. You know, and working closely with THHL and the county, securing 350 acres. But the bottom line, again, I'm gonna say, is about water, wastewater, and the infrastructure, part of whatever we gotta develop. And the bottom line is keeping our families home, our children home, and not having to move away. And at the same time, what is affordable? So there's different levels of that. So I can tell you the different projects I've been involved in and actually completed and done, and others that are forthcoming. But housing in general, at all levels, as a council member, I'm always advocating for whatever we need to do. And it takes administration and council working closely together. But again, my experience has been, if we can each put what we need to do to make sure that we have the resources available, then housing will come.
There you go.
Thank you.
So can I ask a follow-up question here? So one of the challenges, I think, to our affordable housing projects is the not in my backyard sort of mentality. And even larger than that, right, there's a, right? People will, you know, file these lawsuits, right, to prevent things from moving forward. What can we do to sort of get people on board, right? With the fact that, that what they're doing, in my opinion, right, is not only, you know, preventing us from providing the housing that we need, but really forcing families to have to separate, right? Because so many of our young people are moving off island.
Yeah, and that's another big point right there. And I think looking at existing homes, that we can add additional dwelling units on existing homes, even in farm lots. I mean, farming is a big part, but we gotta rethink on how we do things today and from yesterday. And again, what is affordable? We're trying to find whatever income or resources we can secure here to better lessen the, the burden on the people at all different levels. So for me, I think, in the experience that I've had and working on several bills like we talked about earlier, and to sure that we can do additional dwelling units. We have the 800 square foot unit you can have now, but then more than that. And I think working and seeing and understanding the different teams that need to be placed, that we're on that track right now, so I'm happy that we have that opportunity.
Alright, thank you. So the next question is about economic diversification, right? We all know that Kauai has long relied on tourism, but it leaves the island vulnerable to economic downturns like we saw during the pandemic. So there's an ongoing need to diversify the economy, to create more resilient and sustainable economic opportunities for our residents. Potential sectors for diversification include, but are not limited to, agriculture, technology, healthcare, renewable energy, and the arts. What is your vision for economic diversification on Kauai? And which sectors do you believe hold the most promise for our island's future?
Oh my goodness, economic diversity, that is a big, big part of securing the resources that we need overall, right? And we've been in, I've been involved in many studies and plans and all that. Like for Kapaa, example, for the development plan there and ensuring that we have enough resources, whether it be parking and traffic and addressing infrastructure and all of that stuff, right? And then the bigger picture, tourism in general. When I grew up, you know, was a big part of our community. So how do we continue that? And I think by connecting and bringing the resources back to assure that we can move forward within each of our communities. Diversification, oh my goodness, agriculture. I mean, we come from old plantation days. We, I understand that. But how do we confirm like the egg park in Kelaua? You know, that's a big one that we created there. And the whole idea was that to, from farm to table, farm to school, farm to, you know, creating that kind of understanding on the foods part of it, and then creating duplications of that kind of ideas and thinking as we continue to move forward. So Ainaho Kupu O'Kilauea is a big example to me about community putting all the resources together and then reaching out into the community. And then like tourism, you mentioned about tourism, again. Cocoa bombs and all, you know, all of that kind of thinking. My grandmother, folks, all worked in the hotel industry. So we gotta figure out how, and as a, as a leader in a, in the government, to get the voice of the people on the table and then giving the resources back.
There you go, the voice of the people. I like it.
You know, yeah, it's just how, and yeah, and they remember that, but it's not happening. So people are just kind of moving. So as a council member, you know, legislative branch is to kind of bring the voice to the table and then go. And then we go and reach out from whatever. I mean, to me, that's the, versus the other side, just kinda, you know.
Right, right, right.
So I was like, okay, let's go. So I kind of get excited about and concerned about this question because, yeah, and I have my grandchildren now and we're trying to keep everybody, you know, secure and at home. It's like difficult.
Yeah, it is.
I've heard so many different stories, but we might be talking too much, but
No, you're fine.
I think it's important as leaders and business people and government leaders that we sincerely reach. And there's no, visitors will come and people from, you know, which is okay. But at the same time, whatever happened in the past, happened in the past. But we're talking about the future now.
Right.
And it's so different. And all of our aunties and uncles, they don't understand. So we gotta make it a better delivery and understanding of this is where we at, this is what we need, and this is how we're gonna get it. And I have the experience to reach out and do it. I just need the, we need to connect and move.
There you go. Thank you. Yeah, no, you're great.
Really helpful. Alright, continuing to another topic is our climate change and environmental sustainability. Kauai is particularly vulnerable to impacts of climate change, including coastal erosion, extreme weather events, and threats to natural habitats. And we know addressing these climate changes and promoting environmental sustainability is critical. Okay. Kauai has explored various strategies, including coastal protection, renewable energy adoption, waste reduction, and sustainable agriculture. So how would you address climate change and promote environmental sustainability on Kauai?
Oh my God, this is another one that, you know, talking about sea level rise and, and just we're an island, and it's gonna happen. And an example that I've been trying to work, you know, is wastewater and all that. You know, get it out of like the lid gate sewer system and all that. Relocating stuff like that, why wait till the disaster comes? We need to relocate and think that way. Adjusting climate change, you know, we had the whole coastal path that we created along the beach area. That was a big issue. But I think in combining and understanding how it would develop and then move forward on that, because climate change is gonna happen no matter what. And I think there's a lot of good opportunities and resources out there that needs to connect to this discussion. My understanding again is our beaches are eroding pretty bad in certain areas. And so we need to adjust those. But we can't if we don't have the right funding. Like Rilua Beach right there in the front, you know, that has had been an issue. And they say, why are you building a coastal path right in front there when it's gonna go away? But I think if we manage it better and move it, I think it's gonna be, we have an opportunity to keep everything in place.
Thank you. So next question is about transportation. While visitors contribute to traffic congestion, the surge in traffic when schools resumed in August underscores the impact of resident commuters on the island's transportation system as well. In addition to infrastructure improvements, Kauai has been exploring various efforts to reduce traffic congestion, such as expanding bus services, developing safer bike lanes, encouraging walking through improved sidewalks and pathways. However, our island's rural nature and the dependence on cars present unique challenges. Here's the question. What solutions to ease traffic congestion on Kauai resonate most with you?
Bottom line, born and raised on Kauai, we gotta go Maoka. We gotta use the old plantation roads. We gotta figure out a way, because it's there. I can get from Waileu Bridge all the way up to Waileua, all the way up, and out to Lihui. We can get from the old power line road all the way to Hanalei without even getting on the main. I mean, it's there. It was used before. And we talked about this before, and I'm an advocate for it. And how to reuse and look at other ways to do traffic or, or safely, of course. But there are other routes that our old plantation days or trucks utilized to get where they needed to go instead of the main road. And it's obvious that we only have one. You go here and you go back, right? So I think with that, and then I encourage, I totally support, you know, walkable, bikeable communities. I think that's another part, get out of your car and walk or bike. But we gotta make it safe. We gotta make it connected. We gotta make sure the paths are, you know, in the areas that is safe, like I just said. Whether they've been a coastal within a town core. So that's another part. In addition to looking at different routes that is already there, the footprint is there. We gotta provide, here we go again, the resources to make it work. Whether you're going Maoka up like to Waileua, from Hanalei, you're coming on the, you know, to the power line road and even up to Kokea, I mean, all of that. It's there. The footprint is there. And we've been talking about this. So I think with that part, and then encouraging like how we did right here in Lihui, the whole town core, walkable, bikeable, you know, kind of community. And then our transportation system, our Kauai bus, additional opportunities, shuttle services, like getting people out of their cars where they can park and walk, you know? I'm sorry, but all the different pathways and walkways. So I think that's the bigger part and vision to me. And that we gotta do it not only in certain parts, but all parts of our island needs that kind of understanding from Keikaha all the way to Hanalei.
Right, right.
But again, the biggest part for me would be utilizing those back roads.
Alright.
A good example is, is the bypass road. We've had it not before the bypass road, you didn't have to go to Kapaa, just think about that. But now you can get up there.
Right.
So there are old plantation pineapple roadways that was used more for maintenance. But now we can convert that into ways that we can enjoy ourselves and travel this island in a different way.
Love it. There you go.
There you go. Helpful. Alright, continuing forward with agriculture and food sustainability. Agriculture has the potential to play a larger role in Kauai's economy by providing local food, preserving open space, and contributing to economic diversification. However, challenges such as limited infrastructure, general disinterest of younger generations, and the need for startup financing persist. What is your vision for a thriving agricultural sector on Kauai? And what actions would you prioritize as a county council member?
As county, I mean, to me, again, the prime example would be our Kelaua project, the Ainaho Kilauea. I mean, that to me was food to table, food to school, working with the, the children. Even in Kapaa, we had the Future Farmers of America. I was part of that when I was growing up. We gotta get our young students back to understanding what agriculture means for our island, whether it be through livestock, whether it be through growing, whether it be whatever. We gotta get our young people. At the same time, looking at the infrastructure we're currently having, if we can create agricultural parks throughout the island and make it educational and worthy of the understanding of the importance of agriculture. And I, and I always go back to old plantation days, whether it be pineapple and sugar and, and sugarcane, you know? But for me, we, we have a good example in Kelaua. I keep going back to that. And then out in Keikaha and Ele, I mean, there's opportunities there with land, of course, on the west side, coffee, you know, all of that. But how do we continue to offer the opportunity there? And I think we have footprints already in place. We have understanding of what we need to, we come from those days. So if we, as a council, can connect So if we as a council can connect with the farmers and encourage, like I said, with a cattle, the beef side. Because I know the Sancho's, I used to work in them, carry the beef, you know, as it got slaughtered in, you know, plantation days. And so I think that's the kind of thinking we need. And local grown, local beef, local everything, at least an option and then go from there. And so to me, the agricultural park thinking needs to resonate in other parts of our island, which I think going to attract more resources to make it happen and more better educational understanding for students, for young people.
That's great. Thank you. So next question is on destination management. The Kauai Destination Management Action Plan aims to manage tourism in a way that benefits residents and visitors alike by promoting sustainable practices and enhancing community engagement. What are your top one or two priorities for tourism on Kauai?
How I know the tourism of yesterday is different than the tourism of today. Like I said, my, pretty much all my family members come from the tourism industry, whether it be in a hotel or whether it be in a Smith's boats or everybody worked there. So we want to invite and welcome our visitor, but we also got to educate our visitor. When you come to our island, this is what you need to do. This is where you need to go and this is how you visit these very parts. I still think transportation is a big part. In and out of vehicle, parking, of course, is a big part. But shuttle service is to me a big plus if we can. The hotel industry, of course, has been struggling, you know, a little bit. But I think if we can work with the development plan or the tourism plan and HLTA and HTA and all those guys and really provide that support that they need, we are talking as a council member now and get the resources out that way. Because again, we got to make sure that our visitor has the right experience, but they understand our culture, they know where we come from, they know how we, you know, we're not saying don't come, come, we want you to come. But this is what you got to understand and how you're going to visit our island and ensure that you're not going to get hurt. You'll make sure you can, you know, reach out that way. And then at the same time, educate and connect our local families and our business community and give them the resources as government officials, leaders and in the business. I think that's a big, big part. And I totally support agriculture and making sure that we provide every single resource. Even Hanalei, the taro, you know, and all of that and now Kauai coffee, you know, and lid gate farms. That was an awesome opportunity to share that. Oh, and then taking our story to the hill, taking our story to the different parts and explain to them, you can come. We have some rules here, you guys. Come, but this is what you need to do when you come. And aloha, you know, and I think that's a big, big part in promoting what we got to do. I'm kind of going overboard council, but that's okay. And then, yeah, that's my thinking.
Great. Thank you. And as we conclude, is there anything else you would like to share with our viewers?
I just, I'm so thankful for this opportunity to share my heart, my pu'uvai. I've been in leadership roles in so many different ways, but my role now is papa, so I love that. But at the same time, serving as a government leader at the council capacity and assuring that whatever is coming our way, I will do whatever I can to connect with my fellow council members and be assured that I truly understand the administrative side and how we connect the resources. And sometimes we got to all connect and take ourselves afar and bring everything back, the resources, meaning to Washington DC, back to, you know, the different islands from Maui to Honolulu, we're all connected and back to island of Kauai. And be assured for me, I have the understanding and the resources and ability to reach out as a team member now and then connecting and then bringing back. I think that's the biggest part, whether it be tourism, agriculture, infrastructure for, you know, and of course disaster situations that come about. We got to be prepared, preparedness is a big part. And I've been there, hello, done that. So I think that's another part that we got to assure that we're reaching out and educating our residents, our people and our visitors. When you come, you visit, you speak aloha, but when you go back, aloha too, right? And then all of that. So thank you so much for the opportunity. I'm thankful for the chance to speak and look forward to serving one more time. And yeah, and I'm ready and thank you and thanks for you.
Well, thank you as well for your time.
Aloha.
Thank you, sir. Great talking with you today.
Absolutely. Always a pleasure.
Mahalo nui loa for joining us today. We hope these interviews give you a clearer understanding of the candidates and the vision they have for our beloved island.
We'd like to take a moment to acknowledge the incredible support that made this series possible.
First, a big thank you to the Hawaii Crop Improvement Association.
We also want to express our gratitude to our Hawaii Lodging and Tourism Association, our Kauai chapter, for their continued partnership.
A special thanks goes out to Hoikee, Kauai Community Television, for providing the platform to bring these important conversations to you.
We're also grateful for Kauai Island Utility Cooperative for their unwavering support in our community initiatives.
And thank you to KKCR, Kauai Community Radio, for helping us reach more of you across the island.
We couldn't have done this without Keikaha Agriculture Association, who have been champions of local engagement.
And last, but certainly not least, a heartfelt thanks to Meridian Pacific for their generous support of this effort.
Remember, your voice matters. Make it heard. Be sure to vote in the upcoming election and help shape the future of Kauai.
Thanks for watching. Ahui ho.
Ahui ho. Aloha and welcome to a special series of interviews with your Kauai County Council candidates. I'm Lexi Jones, Vice Chair of Hoikee Community Television.
And I'm Mark Periello, President of the Kauai Chamber of Commerce. We're honored to bring you these conversations, giving each candidate the opportunity to share their vision for our island's future.
Today, we'll be speaking with Billy DiCosta, who's eager to share his ideas and plans for our community. These interviews are an important part of our democratic process, giving you the chance to learn more about who's running and why.
Our hope is that these conversations inspire you to engage in the process and to vote. Every voice matters and your vote is crucial to shaping the future of Kauai.
So let's dive in. Please welcome Billy to the conversation.
Thank you, Lexi and Mark. I appreciate being here. I'm a little nervous hanging around two community members that I highly respect and thank you for putting this on. Thank you to all the people watching today. It's very important in our United States, states and counties to get involved in voting. If you don't get involved, your voice doesn't get heard and you cannot grumble if you don't get your political leader in.
There you go, no vote, no grumble, right?
It's important to be here. So thank you.
Thank you.
We're happy to have you here with us today. So why don't we dive into some of these questions? First, why don't you introduce yourself to our audience? And tell us a little bit about why you have decided to take on the kulianna of leadership in our community.
First of all, my name is Billy DiCosta. I've been a four generation Portuguese Spaniard on the island. My family links all the way back to the first voceros that came and taught Kanaka, how to rope and raise cattle. My Portuguese side came from the Madeira Islands in the sugar industry. Actually, when I did my family historical tree, all the way back to the 1600s, my family were growing sugar as workers in the sugar plantation way back when sugar was made by squeezing cane and getting out the juice. So local boy went to college in California, Humboldt State, got a business degree with concentration economics, came back, married my soulmate. She's the pillar and the rock of our family. She's the empowered woman who makes more than me. She's a nurse. She was at Wilcox for 27 years now at KVMH, working on her second retirement. I raised three boys, two of which are on the mainland, one in college, one as a nurse like his mother in Kirkland, Washington. My oldest boy is in the electrical union, in the trades industry. And I ran for politics because I felt that all the hard work that I did growing up on the plantation, working summer jobs on the Robinson Ranch, carrying those spray tanks that weighed 90 pounds, which nobody know, today they have those little plastic tanks that weigh maybe 25 pounds. We used to carry the 90 pound, it was a galvanized pressurized tank. I planted grass in the plantation. I worked construction on Oahu. I took a semester off of college and worked on the power lines between Pro City and Iea and put in those towers that sit on the ridge of Oahu because I needed to put money to go to school. And I had a vision that I wanted a better life for my family. And I'm sitting here today to tell you guys without bragging that my three boys have land and homes already within my, and my wife's purview of making our dreams come true. And I ran because I want to help every family on Kauai ni hau to have the same dream and the same accomplishments. And I think it's important, if you can make it happen for your personal life, you know how to make it happen for the county or the state that you work in. So this is why I'm here.
Great. Thank you. Well, first and foremost, diving into a hot topic would be our housing affordability. Kauai faces a significant challenge in providing affordable housing for its residents. The demand of affordable workforce housing continues to outpace supply while rising housing costs and the prevalence of off-island investments exacerbate the issue. The community has been exploring various strategies to address these challenges, including increasing the supply of affordable housing, providing rental assistance and supporting community land trusts. Now, the question is, given the ongoing housing crisis on Kauai, what specific strategies would you prioritize to increase housing affordability? And how would you work to implement these strategies as a member of county council?
Well, thank you, Lexi, for that question. I believe my track record currently speaks for itself. And for the record, I do have rental units that I rent to local families and it's all at the county affordable rental program. So I don't just talk the story. I could be renting it for a lot more, but I want to help local families. And currently I believe I'm helping four local families right now. I want you guys to know that this year I introduced a tax resolution. It was to increase the hotel and TBR tax. I was told by many of my colleagues and special interest groups and business owners that this might be a cutthroat thing during election season. Why would you do that? Why would you raise taxes on the hotel tourism industry and the TVRs, TVR owners who are voters? And I did it because that was the right thing to do. We don't get into politics for the long haul. We get into politics to do good for the people and get out. If you're a career politician, then you are not doing good for the people. And I did that and I got five votes to support. I got the mayor to support, which that's one of my motifs. I work well with administration. I don't always get along and we buck heads, but I believe the respect is mutual between the mayor and the administration team. So we are allowed to do a lot of things that a lot of people don't see when we meet. And this was a done deal before we even went, you know, in front of the people to explain. So we raised the taxes on the hotel and TVRs. This money goes into a special coffer fund to the housing development, about $8 million or so a year. And now we have a checkbook, a personal checkbook for the county that we can buy land and put in infrastructure. Right now, there's been a lot of land that has been transferred among the billionaires that are here. The billionaires that are buying up chunks of land from 100 acres to 1,000 acres. They don't buy land to do public housing, middle class housing. They buy land so they can have their personal getaway privacy. Once those lands are bought, Lexi and Mark, the lands are gone. So now the county has a checkbook, we can go out and buy ag land. We have the purview to change ag into residential. For example, if you buy a place in Puhie, right outside of the residential area on ag land, we can change the zoning. We can put nice 8,000 square foot lots with three bedroom homes. Right now, the price square foot about 350,000. Maybe we can work with a developer and get that price down around 300,000. So a thousand square foot home with the infrastructure, which would be about one third the cost. So 300,000 for the home, 200,000 for the infrastructure to be put in sewer, water and electric. And we could hopefully sell a home to the middle class workforce housing for 500,000. And I heard many politicians talk about problems of housing. No one has come up with a solution. I've introduced a solution. It's going to get voted on here, it got voted on, it's passed. And I also introduced with Mal Reposo, a bill to increase density on ag lots. So Ag, Ag CPR. It's called a ordinance to increase the zoning of ag lands. How cool it is now, the people that live up Kapahai or Waileua or areas where they have five acres of land. Before they could only put one house. Now they can put one house in one gas cottage. If they have two dwellings that are allocated, now they can put two gas houses. We double the density with infrastructure already in place. And that was a thumbs up from the mayor. It's not just the council. If Mayor Kalakami didn't want this thing to happen, he wouldn't, he wouldn't sign it. So that is going to be voted on coming up soon. It's going to go to committee, just got out of first reading. So I'm excited to see how our council members vote on this. And those are two solutions, Lexi and Mark, that are in place right now to put inventory back into housing.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Well done. So the next question is about economic diversification. Right, we all know this, we're very dependent on tourism here on Kauai, but it leaves the island vulnerable to economic downturns as we saw during the pandemic. There's a growing need to diversify the economy, to create more resilient and sustainable economic opportunities for our residents. Potential sectors for diversification include agriculture, technology, healthcare, renewable energy and the arts, among others. What is your vision for economic diversification on Kauai? And which sectors do you believe hold the most promise for the island's future?
Well, as an economic concentration major in my business degree, I studied how money circulates and what's the importance of having money, homegrown money here on the county of Kauai. You know, some of the best paying jobs are our construction industry, electrical, plumbing, drywall, concrete, carpenters. You keep that sector working and you keep smart growth. I'm not talking about exploiting Kauai. Let's get it straight now for our viewers. I'm talking about small, smart growth that we can put our tradespeople to work. When tradespeople are working, tradespeople are spending money. When they spend money, you circulate money in the economy. A lot of tourist based industry, yes, they pay service oriented workers, but a lot of the profit margin goes back to the parent company, which is owned in the mainland. We have many local companies, Unlimited, Shioe. We have local companies that employ local employees that spend money. I'm also a big movement into the ADC lands on the west side. I've been working on this project since I started, many stumbling blocks. You talk about alternative energy and going green and putting in solar farms and, and growing trees to put back oxygen in the ozone layers. I all about going green, but when we trade out going green for prominent agricultural lands that should have livestock and farming, I don't agree with that. I don't believe a solar farm should take precedence over ag lands, ag lands that should have livestock and farming. I've been introducing this to ADC with Mal Reposo. We're talking about putting small 100 acre farmers on ranch lands on the west side. They have over 12,000 acres unused. It's been unused since 1990. And for some reason, I still have stumbling blocks. Maybe I need to speak to Governor Green, but those lands are a fire hazard. They've been burnt the last couple of times in the last five years. And if we could have every family on Kauai, every family who would hooey up, meaning join together, you, Lexi, you, Mark and me, all three of us buy a cow. And the ranch on 100 acres out on the west side raises our cow. They raised the cow to 24 to 28 months. They send it to the slaughterhouse. We pay a fee to the ranch that raised our cow. We pay a fee to the slaughterhouse who slaughtered the cow. And that's our one third beef, one third in your freezer, one third in Mark's freezer, one third in my freezer. It's a guaranteed business. It's called a co-op ranching. I learned it from some of my colleagues that I go to these conferences from Nevada and Utah. They have co-op ranching right now going on where 80% of their cattle herd is already purchased from the time the calf is born. How could it be, Lexi, if you have a pair of cowboy boots and you have a cow that's been raised by the ranch? You can call yourself a cowgirl because you have a cow. And we need to think out of the box. And those are solution based things that I'm introducing.
Excellent.
Yeah, that's great. I have some friends who do something similar, not at scale, right? But just, and they're a small, you know, group there. And so, right, what a great, I never thought about taking it to scale. What a great idea.
That's like a plantation mindset, right? My mom and grandma guys made sweet bread. The next door neighbor made mochi, the Japanese. The Chinese made homemade lapchong sausage. The Filipinos had their lumpia and the okra that they would make in their peanut beet. I mean, we traded, we traded a lot. My dad was a hunter. My uncle was a fisherman. I don't see why that type of industry cannot come full circle and have a price on it. So now instead of just trading, you trade raising the animal for the price. Instead of paying that astronomical cost at Costco safely, we were bringing all our beef that is being sent away right now. A lot of beef is being sent away. They call it in the feedlots of the mainland and then they come back packaged. How come we don't craft a feedlot here? Why don't we have a feedlot? We have over 1,200 acres of state land, I believe Robinson leases it. How cool would it be if we could work with Robinson and create a feedlot that Hartung could grow some hay and some corn, which they're already growing? And we could graze cattle, feed them some corn and hay in the east. And we could graze cattle, feed them some corn and hay in the evening. And we could finish a grass-fed animal on grass and on barley, oats and corn. And we could have a mixture of a marbleized meat that could be for the plate to be served for local families. Owned by Mark, Lexi.
And Billy.
And Paul.
That's great.
I'm honored to be in your circle. Yes, I'm making the point.
Yes, of course.
For sure.
Thank you. Continuing forward as we dive into climate change and environmental sustainability. Kauai is particularly vulnerable to the impacts of climate change, including coastal erosion. Extreme weather events and threats to natural habitats. Kauai has explored various strategies, including coastal protection, renewable energy adoption, waste reduction, and sustainable agriculture. How would you address climate change and promote environmental sustainability on Kauai?
Well, I just gave you guys my food sustainable idea. As far as energy idea and remember for every solar farm that we put in. Those are acreage of land that could be used to farm vegetables, fruits and livestock. So I am for walking the fine line. Where all the industries are able to thrive and we make the right decision for the right people. So we are sustainable. Hydro is a very sustainable farm of electricity. I believe the Robinson plantation has a hydro. I believe we have a few hydras right now in Waianha Valley and up in Hana Pepe. And I don't even know if those hydras are operating to full potential. But I do know one thing that we need to have costs allocated to our local families. Without raising their electric bill based on putting in all this infrastructure, go green projects. Go green projects get federal funding. And when I look to the camera, I want you guys to understand one thing. K I U C is a co-op. You own that company, you own that, I own, all the people own that company. But they are not allowed to make a profit. So when they do have profit margin monies, they have to re-spend it or give it back to the people. And this last time, we didn't get a check in the mail. I know my check was, they said they didn't make a profit. But yet they spend millions of dollars on renewable energy. I believe sometimes some of that money should go back to the constituents, go back to the electric paying customers. Because they're the ones who own the company. Right now, we have electric panels, solar panels, they're called, in Kikaha on homes. That K I U C don't buy back the power anymore because the grid is too full. So it comes a time and point when the grid is full and we need to make smarter decisions. Everything depends on our next president-elect. I don't want to talk country politics, but we have a Republican and Democrat. If our Republican win, we might not have as many green initiatives. We might go back to burning fossil fuel. If our Democrat get elected, we might try and go by two thousand and fifty, totally electric. I'm not sure, but I can tell you guys one thing. If you look up lithium batteries and you look up the toxicity when you mine lithium in areas like New Mexico and Texas and Nevada. They are poisoning the water table when they extract lithium. There's no place to put lithium batteries right now in our landfill. So think out of the box is great, but how much out of the box should we think? And how can we balance both fossil fuel, solar, hydro? And keep the electric bill as inexpensive to our people as possible? That's what I represent. Coastal climate rise, it's evident it's rising. We should watch how we diversify and build. We should respect the coastal zones, do inland movement of building. But if people have kuliana lands next to the ocean. It's not up to the government to tell them, hey, we're going to take away your kuliana ocean land and move you inland. Because the sea level is rising. That family should have the right to hold on to their land. And if the ocean take that land someday, then it does. But we should not take away their property as a government entity. Thank you.
Thank you, Billy. And so our next question is about transportation. And so while visitors contribute to our traffic congestion on Kauai, no doubt. The surge in traffic when schools returned in August underscores the impact of our resident commuters as well. In addition to infrastructure improvements. We have been exploring various efforts to reduce traffic congestion. Such as expanding bus services, developing safer bike lanes or any bike lanes. Encouraging walking through improved sidewalks and pathways. However, our island's rural nature and dependence on cars present unique challenges. What solutions to ease traffic congestion on Kauai resonate most with you?
Well, we all know how bad traffic is in infrastructure. Two lanes going west, two lanes going north will help. We've had many roads that were in place right outside Waialua. That we bottleneck. We have a two-lane coming out of Kapahai and then it bottlenecks again, right? We have some land next. We grow farmers at one time willing to either sell or give us that land. We have the opportunity to work with state. Our House of Representatives and our senators should be working with our governor and be able to get some federal funding. But we need more opening of lanes going to and from. As far as the tourists, we was prime example of Hyena and K A Beach and busing tourists in and out. I think tourists should not have the opportunity to rent cars. I think if they want to rent a car for a day, then they schedule the activities around that car and they rent that car. Otherwise, we should be busing our tourists to and from designated areas. Koke State Park, Polihale, Kikaha Beach, Hyena. The ATV tours, there's Koloa, Oli runs a great ATV tour. We should be busing our tourists on there, not having them use a vehicle to get there. So we have that in place right now and I'm not sure. I believe they park by Waipaa. The mayor and our council and our constituents statewide worked really hard to get that in place. And it's working phenomenal. Why don't we put that in place all over? We're working on Puipu. We have a bike lane right now. We call it a cleaner and more travelable city. I believe one of our engineers and I drew a blank on his name, but Michael Moore, Michael Moore. He's all into that and I like that, especially for tourists. Because our locals like to drive their vehicle. But our tourists should be walking, biking and catching bus. And for the bus, Councilman Kagawa made up an excellent idea. You know, that we have too many bus availability routes for people that are hollow-hollow during lunchtime. I mean, we should be busing our workers in the morning and in the evening. But if we can save some of that money and cut the cost of our bus program and put that money towards infrastructure, towards middle-class housing. We have that ability in our budget to do that and we're not and we should. We need to chip away at our problems with the financial funding that we have, our revenue stream and solve problems, you guys. There's a world of problems I like to talk about. You know, Department of Water, they need funding, our solid waste landfill, they need funding. Our sewer treatment plants out in Waialua, we just spoke about that. We got to replace that pump. We have so much pressuring problems that unless we chip away and save here and there and put money where infrastructure is. Our keiki, our opio, which is teenagers, our mopuna, mopuna, which is grandchildren. Will not have a place to call home. Kauai will not be a home for our, for our next generations.
Thank you.
You can tell that there's a real passion, like you genuinely can feel the passion behind the words that you're speaking. And I understand as we're focusing in the lens of traffic that we need to support an infrastructure piece. However, many individuals have had. Not the strongest feelings of adding additional lanes to our existing highways and having to. Understand the plans of that as we saw with the additional lane from Kapahai bypass into the highway. And then again bottleneck after the bridge. How do you manage the influx of the traffic? When we do have a challenge with the infrastructure, I think that is a pressing issue as well.
And thank you for that. And thank you for mentioning passion. I, I sometime come across misunderstood by a lot of constituents who don't know me. And I like to pre-apologize to all of you. It seems like I may be overconfident, a little arrogant and it's a misunderstanding. I'm just really passionate about fixing our island. Being able to give all of the children out there the same opportunity that my wife and I have given our three sons. And I believe that I'm a key intricate part of the leadership of Kauai to make this happen. So I look in a camera and say, apologize if I seem arrogant and confident and I misunderstood. You're right. You watching me is right. I can be that guy. But it's only because I know the route we need to take and the solutions. And when you ask me about the infrastructure, putting two lanes roads in and how does it do? We should not be compromised on our quality of life with letting tourists drive all over this island like they do. They should be on the road at uncertain time and off the road is uncertain time. We should make that mandatory. They don't get on the road till nine o'clock in the morning. If they want to get on the road, they got to be on the road before five. Between six and eight is a transverse time for all of our families that are going to and from work. In the afternoon between four and six, they should not be on the road going home. I'm sorry. We are, we are giving up a quality of life to the tourists. And we've become so tourist hungry. And what happened to lower numbers of tourists? High-quality tourists that come here and spend money and go home. We don't need the cheap tourists that come and spend three months and rent a tourer. And want to go all over the island when they feel like they want to go. Like what had happened to looking after our local people? Looking after the people that have made Kauai and Ni'ao, which it is today. And before I move on, since I mentioned Ni'ao. Luke Evelyn and myself in my first term gave a tax exempt to Ni'ao. And for all the people that thought we did any special favors for the Robinson family, we didn't. We did a special favor for a Kanaka that lives on Ni'ao. Because if those taxes could not be paid by a Robinson family, another billionaire would own their island. And we don't want that to happen. We want the people that have the land to reclaim in their hands, just like our local families who have ag land. We don't want the property assessed values to go so high that they have to sell their land. We want their children on their land.
Great. We're continuing forward as we mentioned agriculture and food sustainability. Agriculture has the potential to play a larger role in Kauai's economy by providing local food, preserving open space. And contributing to economic diversification. However, challenges such as limited infrastructure, general disinterest from younger generation. And the need for startup financing persists. What is your vision for a thriving agricultural sector on Kauai? And what actions would you prioritize as a county council member to support this vision?
I've made several keys points on that already about the small ranching on the A D C lands. But in Kilauea, at the Kilauea Farms, we have a man named Yosh. Who works out there and we had some donation from a very wealthy family who gave some money and some land. And our county subsidized that program. Every year we give money to that program. And that farm gives out groceries at a very economically cheap price for our kupuna and for our locals. And the only reason why they're able to do it is because they're subsidized by the county. So we already have a program in place. We just got to model that Kilauea program across the island. We need one of those programs in the west side. We need one of those programs in Hana Pepe and Ale Ale and we need one of those programs in the Lihui area. And if we can do that, we can have a food sustainable resource of vegetables, fruits and my livestock. Co-op program that I introduced and have it thriving. And here's my little kicker. Here's thinking out of the box. We do have a homeless problem and you guys did not bring that up. And I don't know why, but I can tell you what's troubling me. That's a topic that nobody has a solution for. It is. No one has come up with a solution. I've been talking about this with my council members. Mel Reposo, Bernard, Kipukai and Ross, and we're talking about causing a homeless farm. Where we have our homeless on one piece of land, ag land. Then we have those military tents and army cots and a place for them to shower and use the bathroom in the. Nice kept clean bathrooms, porta-potties. And they work two to three hours a day on a farm, raising papaya, banana, taking care of livestock. How cool would it be to empower our homeless community? To be part of a solution, which is food sustainability and have them have a purpose in life. And then they can transition from that into our. I call it homeless housing structure that our mayor and our governor are working on. So they go from the farm where they work and they stay on a cot and they stay in a tent and they abide by the rules. And our healthcare services go to this area and they're growing food and livestock. And then from there, they transition into that, into that home, transitional housing. And then from the Kahale, thank you, Mark. I lost the word, but thank you. And how cool would it be to set up a program? And not to invite more homeless here because we don't want more homeless, but to take care of what we have. Because I don't think our people like to come to eat lunch or dinner in Lihui and see all the homeless walking around the street. I don't think our people want to go fish ulua behind the airport and have a whole bunch of homeless making them feel uncomfortable. Like when do we come up with a solution-based? Problem equation that we can make happen and that's something I would like to see happen.
Yeah, thank you, Billy. So next is you get to talk a bit more about destination management and tourism. How familiar are you with the Destination Management Action Plan?
I know a little bit, Mark. It's not my forte, you know, as a council member, it's hard to dive deep into everything and to be very versed in everything. And I've answered many of your questions with solutions.
Yeah, absolutely.
Not just recognizing problems. I gave you solutions that some of them are in place right now.
The reason I ask is I'm just going to change the way I ask the question. That's all. Right? And so, you know, the plan aims to manage tourism in a way that benefits residents and visitors alike. By promoting sustainable practices and enhancing community engagement. What are your top one or two priorities for tourism on Kauai?
I like to see high-end tourists on Kauai. I like to see the tourists that cannot afford those room rates. I believe since I looked at some of those room rates in Hyatt and Sonesta's and. Eight to nine hundred dollars a night. I don't know where the comma ina come into play, you know? And when I raise those rates, I, it came out to be like anywhere from ninety cents to two dollars a night. That's all. That's all what the tourists will pay when I raise that tax on hotel and T V Rs. But I think we need more high-end tourists here. You know, I noticed the mayor works really well with the Japanese industry and bringing in the Japanese tourists. Who is very respectful of the land and they tend to stay a couple of days, maybe a weekend they leave. I don't want to see us to be totally dependent only on tourism. Where the roads are bombarded with rental cars and tourer cars and. We as locals seem like we've been pushed out of our lifestyle. We're not only trying to make a living here, we want to feel comfortable and have a lifestyle where we enjoy Kauai. You know, and I think if we don't manage our tourists and manage the visitor industry. We're going to be out of control and we cannot be financially a slave to tourism. We have to have an economy that is diverse and diverse meaning smart growth economy, keeping the trades industry working. Keeping our service-oriented industry working, our hotels, workers, bartenders, bellhops, nurses, schoolteachers, firemen, policemen. Do you know why I introduced that tax increase, Mark and Lexi? I want to tell you why. Because my solution is down two decades away, not just two years away. If I didn't raise that tax, where you think the money would come from to purchase land and put in infrastructure? I'm going to tell you where it will come from, from the budget. The budget that we very well give our fire and police good benefits, good pay. We're going to have to cut the pay. We're going to have to cut the benefits. And I said, we're not doing that. We're going to introduce a tax increase on the very people. That make our local people have to compromise their life, which is the tourists. And I'm sorry as I look into the camera for the tourists from Indiana, from the tourists from Oklahoma, for the tourists from Japan or China. If you come to our island, you pay the extra fee to stay in a room and that money goes towards a housing fund. To make middle-class housing a possibility, a possibility for your keiki one day, Lexi. Mark, maybe for your mopuna one day. Because I know something, when I sit on my land with my wife and I think about my three boys, that's not enough. I want to think about your boys and your kids and your daughter to be able to have land and a house that they can feel proud of. Because remember, Lexi and Mark, when your four or five generations of family members came to Kauai. To better themselves from different countries, from Philippines, from China, from Japan, from Spain, Portugal, you name it, they came. Puerto Rico, they came, they came from England to make a better life. They came because they wanted their family to live here with them, not move away. And sometime I believe our media, social media, news media, they control so much politics. Across our country, our state and our county. And they print inaccurate information to discredit potential political leaders. And I want to tell the audience, don't be fooled by this. Look deep into a person's historical legacy and characteristics that they have showed you year after year. Twenty-four years as a school teacher, I've touched so many students' lives. You asked me about how do we diversify out of how do we build cost housing? I was the first teacher on Kauai to build a tiny home on Kapahai campus. A tiny home that was led by Principal Tommy John Cox and Evan Costler. We built a twelve-by-twelve tiny home, exterior, interior, walls framed in a classroom. Taken apart and built trusses in a classroom and put up on a campus by students, female and male. When I put my mind to a solution-based equation, I'll make it happen. I'll make it happen for the people of Kauai. It's happening right now. I just need one more term to follow through with all of my things we have in place.
Thank you, Billy.
Great. Well, that moves us forward. Is there anything else you would like to share with the viewers? Is there anything else you would like to share with the viewers as your closing statement?
As my closing statement? I've said a lot, but I have a prop that I wanted to show. Let's make Kauai home again. I believe this speaks volumes. And why I say this? Our forefathers, your forefathers, came generations ago. Whether it was mom and dad, who came one generation from California, or whether it was Chinese, Filipino, Japanese ancestors that came five generations ago. They came to make Kauai and ni'ao home. They didn't come here to work really hard. Hard when there was very little tourism and there was a sugar industry, where families worked hard, had housing, and put their kids to college. And now we depend on tourism. There's no economic viability with any type of industry. And Kauai and ni'ao is not home anymore, you guys. It's not home. But I can tell you one thing. When I show you this sign and I tell you to look at this word "home" again, the few bills that I put into place to increase density on ag land, to tax the tourist industries, to put money into a housing coffer, to buy land, put in infrastructure, build middle-class housing, those things that we did ensures that maybe one day our children, grandchildren can call Kauai home again. I don't think it's impossible. I think the viewers watching today with the right decisions on who they want as their leaders, solution-based leaders, not the ones who talk, the ones who implement language as bills signed into law, voted by at least four council members. You need a team of four. Nothing gets passed unless you have four. Our job is to make bills that make Kauai a better place. Our job is not about certificates. Our job is not about visiting every event and waving. Our job is not trying to meet with large landowners and solve a problem. That's not what we do. We make laws that get signed into bills and take action. And that's what Billy Decosta does for the people of Kauai and ni'ao. I take action. Thank you so much. I feel very passionate, as all you viewers can see. I love this island. I love ni'ao. I love growing up with the people from ni'ao who worked on the same plantation as my dad and my grandpa. And I want to look into the camera and look into the people's eyes and tell you, I am a man of my word. I've done much good for Kauai. Consider me in one of your seven votes. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Billy. That was great. It was great to hear your passion today.
Thank you.
Yeah. So mahalo nui loa for joining us today. We hope these interviews give you a clearer understanding of the candidates and the future they envision for our beloved island.
We'd like to take a moment to acknowledge the incredible support that made this series possible.
First, a big thank you to Hawaii Crop Improvement Association.
We also want to express deep gratitude to the Hawaii Lodging and Tourism Association, Kauai Chapter, for their continued partnership.
And a special thanks goes out to Hoikee, Kauai Community Television, for providing a platform to bring these important conversations to you.
We are also grateful for our Kauai Island Utility Cooperative for their unwavering support of our community initiatives.
And thank you to KKCR, Kauai Community Radio, for helping us reach more of you across the island.
We couldn't have done this without Ke'akahua Agriculture Association, who have been champions of local engagement.
And last, but certainly not least, heartfelt thanks to Meridian Pacific for their generous support of this effort.
Remember, your voice matters. Make it heard. Be sure to vote in the upcoming election and help shape the future of Kauai.
Thanks again for watching. Ahui ho.
Ahui ho. Aloha, and welcome to this special series of interviews with your Kauai County Council candidates. I'm Lexi Jones with Hoikee Community Television.
And I'm Mark Periello with the Kauai Chamber of Commerce. We're honored to bring you these conversations, giving each candidate the opportunity to share their vision for our island's future.
Today, we'll be speaking with Felicia Cowden, who's eager to share her ideas and plans for our community. These interviews are an important part of our democratic process, giving you the chance to learn more about who's running and why.
Our hope is that these conversations inspire you to engage in the process and to vote. Every voice matters, and your voice is crucial in shaping the future of Kauai.
So let's dive in. Please join us in welcoming Felicia to the conversation.
Hey, Felicia.
Hi, and thank you, Chamber of Commerce. You guys really contribute a lot in so many different ways. And I really appreciate this of both a candidate and a councilperson who wants our community to be engaged in the political process and go out and vote.
Thank you. I appreciate that. So why don't we dive into the questions?
Okay.
And the first question is, please introduce yourself to our audience and share a little bit about why you have chosen to take up the kuliana of leadership in our community.
Well, thank you. And this is my fourth term in office. So, you know, it develops and grows over time. I will say, first of all, I'm Felicia Cowden. And my early background, education, engineering, business, one of the things that did cause me to begin to run for office was my role on Kauai Community Radio as a private, excuse me, public affairs programmer. And, you know, kind of mediating in the community the different changes and challenges. And to be honest, I have been going to council meetings since I was in my twenties. And definitely in my thirties, particularly as an owner of Hanalei Surf Company, I was very involved in policy. And I was on the board for 13 years of the Kauai North Shore Business Council, if I remember correctly. About 13 years, at least nine years in there as either president or vice president. So, you know, the choices that are made by the council and the county are really important. And so, all of that brought me to being involved. And as I continue to move forward, you know, I'll tell you, it takes longer and it's harder than I even realized before I ran the first time. And I didn't win the first time, by the way. And I wasn't going to run again. And after the flood of 2018, and I went out there to Hainaa and Wa'nehaha, I live on the North Shore. I've lived on the North Shore for 40 years. I remember stepping off the boat in Hanalei to get out. And as soon as I put my foot in the water, somehow I knew I was going to run and I knew I was going to win. And it really felt like a responsibility. I will say, it's not important to me to be important. It's just important to me to help. And the challenges that we face are decades in the making, and they aren't unique to Kauai. They're certainly not even unique to Hawaii. We have a very unique element to them. But the whole nation, and really the world, is facing a lot of the challenges that we are having. And so, I feel a commitment to doing all that I can. And as I'm going into, this would be my seventh year, I've learned a lot. I feel like I have a lot more capacity to really be able to know how to pull the levers and push what's needed to create solutions and more relationships. But I'm still not going to pretend like it's a real easy slam dunk because it isn't.
All right. Thank you, Felicia.
Well, thank you. And as we continue forward, diving into one of the hot topics of conversation is housing affordability. Now, Kauai faces a significant challenge in providing affordable housing for its residents. The demand of affordable and workforce housing continues to outpace supply, while rising housing costs and the prevalence of off-island investment exacerbate the issue. The community has been exploring various strategies to address these challenges, including increasing the supply of affordable housing, providing rental assistance, and supporting community land trusts. Now, given the ongoing housing crisis on Kauai, what specific strategies would you prioritize to increase housing affordability? And how would you work to implement these strategies as county council?
Well, you guys are asking the most critical question, right? When we look at everything from businesses struggling, schools, even just being a consumer and needing to go to the gas station and have it be open, having a bank be open, having a restaurant be open, all of us are being impacted by the lack of housing, even if we're safe within our own house. It affects everything, all layers of business, all layers of productivity. And I want to be able to just start by saying, oh, I'm going to do this policy or pass this policy to build these houses. Like, for example, this week, what we have in front of us is a very well-intended bill. It's called Bill 2933. And that's for every house, it's called density, every house unit that's allowed on a piece of property that they could have another one. So that sounds really great, right? Yay. Except that we have been doing this for at least the six years that I've been involved. And so, when you look at even a sixth of an acre, because of policies that have happened either in the state or in the county, we're allowed to have basically four units on there when we allow the additional dwelling unit and additional rental unit. And I've followed and looked at how many applications are made for those, and very few. It really hasn't made a difference. Now, why is that? So the big challenge is our infrastructure. Our water and our sewer are two big pieces. It doesn't end there. But when I try and make it simple, and I taught middle school, so if I kind of make things too simple, and also on the radio, I find I like to speak at a level where anybody could understand. So I think there's several things that are really important to grasp. One is, it costs just about as much money to flush the toilet as it does to build the house. And even sometimes, like you're trying to build, I live in Kilauea. You want to say, okay, here's another lot. Well, we'll just put another house right there. And of course, there's got to be some way to do it. Well, we don't have much extra water supply in Kilauea. And when we do things like add housing, so for example, like my house, I live on a third of an acre. I could potentially have three other units right on it. All of that raises the value of my property. I would have to put in whole new wastewater infrastructure. And we are, our community, we're hoping to be able to do sewage. But if, as other houses put more and more, they increase the density, that means put more living units and more people in a certain space of time. Well, guess what? There's not the water coming out. And something that we saw in Hanalei a couple of years ago when we had two houses burned down, one even after the fire department was there and arrived, and it was the mother of one of the firemen fighting the fires. So you couldn't be more motivated. But there simply wasn't the water in the pipes. And then, so when I went to look at that, well, guess what? Those pipes have been in there for over 100 years. And two weeks ago, at our council meeting, we had the water department come in and they were talking about their, what's called Water System Investment Plan. Really important. People can look that up on the Department of Water. We have $1.3 billion worth of improvements that we need to do to address where we're at right now. So I'm going to bring it back to housing, because you said, what can we do with housing? You know, having additional dwelling units, certainly. We're doing these places like Le Maola. There are five properties on the islands where we're doing government subsidized housing. So that is not quite like free-market housing. I'm not going to pretend that there isn't limitations on it, such as when you're effectively buying leasehold. It almost puts people in the same position as Hawaiian homelands. So it limits the lenders. Everything can sound great. We can say, well, let's do this. Let's not let them sell it for anything less. But then, you know, the people who can qualify for buying the house might be overqualified for being able to get USDA loans and things like that. So it's complicated. I could just go on for hours. Like that we're doing that, like that we're creating these different changes. I'm not going to pretend like it's easy to do. I'm going to let you ask me some more questions, because I could take that and run for the whole time.
All right. But such an important issue, so thank you for sharing your thoughts. So the next question is about economic diversification. We all know that we are very dependent on tourism for our economy here on island. But that leaves us vulnerable to economic downturns, as we saw during the pandemic. So there's a growing need, growing, there's a need and an ongoing need, might be a better way to say that, to diversify the economy, to create more resilient and sustainable economic opportunities for our residents. Potential sectors for diversification include agriculture, technology, healthcare, renewable energy, and the arts, to name a few. What is your vision for economic diversification on Kauai? In which sectors do you believe hold the most promise for the island's future?
Well, I'm going to say, the list that you just gave are really quite on point, right? I think that those are very excellent ones. I'm hoping that high-tech can really move forward quite a bit. We were all at the West Kauai Business Center, where we talked about cybersecurity. I think any business anywhere needs cybersecurity people. And it's always nice to have a friendly face rather than a long-distance phone call or, you know, e-presence, you know, internet presence. And I think that I'm very thankful for that effort. And I hope that people watching even look into that because there is training capacity. And we have so much of the leaders in the high-tech sector are part-time residents here that I think the Chamber of Commerce and certainly the county are very willing to try and reach to those residents. And what I've seen is a lot of them very much do want to make sure that we have a strong and viable economy here. So what I'm hoping is that we're able to develop from within more people who are able to be parts of those teams. We also see many people do remote work. I'll tell you one little thing I say. We can't have everybody riding in the cart. Somebody has to pull it, which means somebody's got to be doing all that physical labor. We can't have everybody doing remote work. But when I see people move over here and they're doing great economically with the remote work, I want more of our people to be doing great economically with the remote work. So those are one way. Agriculture, I think, is, especially with specialized products, is an area. I'm, as I've said many times, I'm all about neighborhood agriculture. I think we need to be resilient as we grow more locally. That's an excellent place. I mean, you gave me about five different choices. I could go down each one if you want me to. But even things like call centers. Like, I make all these phone calls. And I'm talking to Southeast Asia an awful lot. And with all love and respect to that area of the world, I can tell that we aren't speaking exactly the same language. And I feel like in, we're the westernmost part of the United States. I would like to see us even develop that kind of strategy. And for many of the people who, you know, aren't of complete good health or want to be out and be physical, people can do that at their homes. And we can have all of that here. And then it keeps traffic off the roads, everything else. That's just like one small way, but there's a lot of things.
Yeah, absolutely. And so, just so folks know, the program that Felicia mentioned is through the Kauai Economic Development Board. They're training local folks to become cybersecurity experts so that they can help businesses here on Kauai.
And you're even having a training next week, right? So, you know, you guys are an excellent partner in that.
Thank you.
Truly great. Continuing forward with the conversation about climate change and environmental sustainability. Kauai is particularly vulnerable to the impacts of climate change, including coastal erosion, extreme weather events, and threats to natural habitats. We know addressing climate change and promoting environmental sustainability is critical for our island's future. And Kauai has explored various strategies such as the coastal protection, renewable energy adoption, waste reduction, and sustainable agriculture. So how would you address climate change and promote environmental sustainability on Kauai?
Well, I am very excited about that question. I would describe myself as passionate about it. And I am also committee chair for Public Safety and Human Services, vice chair for Public Works. So those things really fall under my umbrella. And I would say, in the three terms that I have been in office already, I have really started to gain a good relationship with our large landowners. And we really need to treat them as valued partners. And the profound changes that have happened just in the 40 short years that I have been able to observe what happens here as sugar has moved- able to observe what happens here as sugar has moved out. We used to have all these inward and upward roads, all the cane haul roads. And of course, when cane was utilized, we had controlled burns, and how we, our land management was much different. So what you can see from me continuing is, I'm very passionate about how we have watershed management plans, how we have evacuation routes. We have places that maybe made sense then, and there were roads that came out, like when you look at Hanapepe Heights, that's a big, long place. I call those lollipops. I don't know exactly the number of people, I would just guess, maybe 1,500 people. Have a cliff on one side and a burnable western boundary. Thank goodness, before the fire we had this summer, a fire break. Thank you to whoever cut the fire break. I think it was the Department of Transportation on Department of Hawaiian Homelands, cut that fire break, could have saved that neighborhood. Thank goodness, everything went well. When we're looking at climate change, and for people who are concerned about that word being over, or that phrase being overused, well, the climate is changing, and the climate is always changing. So whether it is all from human-induced, or where we are in the galaxy, or the solar system, I'm not going to argue with that. There's changes happening, and so I pay a lot of attention to our Water Use and Development Plan. I'll be going to the Commission on Water Resource Management next Tuesday, because these things are so important. And when we look at the studies that have come out of UH, we see that very likely, in the next 30 to 50 years, we might lose 20% of our aquifer due to saltwater inundation, right? So we have to be very careful, in my view, of, again, working with the large landowners to hold on to those reservoirs, right? If we get less rain, or less consistent rain, or our aquifer is reduced, we have to have that, that, you know, surface water. And the whole western half of the United States, for the most part, has water detention and water retention. And so there are many elements like that. And I think we really can't understate how important it is to be resilient, for many different reasons. And Kauai and Hawaii was a master of it. I'm very proud of the heritage of the culture that I have been hanai'd into. And I have put a lot of time learning about traditional practices, Hawaiian traditional practices. And just a shout-out to that community was able to basically amplify nature, rather than exhaust nature. We've done it before, we can do it again, we could probably do it even more easily if we chose to really reinvest in what we talk about as a circular economy, and our cultural peace, all that can kind of come into your last question, too. And certainly the arts and all of that. So it all comes together, and care very much about it.
Thank you, Felicia.
And live simply. Live simply so others can simply live. Yeah.
Nice. I like it. So next, we're moving on to transportation.
Okay.
You know, traffic congestion on Kauai continues to be a problem for our residents and visitors alike. But, you know, a lot of people sort of blame everything on the tourists, but as we see our, when school resumed in August, the impact of commuters on the island's transportation system is real. So in addition to infrastructure improvements, we have been exploring various efforts to reduce congestion, such as expanding bus services, developing safer bike lanes, and encouraging walking through improved sidewalks and pathways. However, our island's rural nature and the dependence on cars present unique challenges. What solutions to each, to ease traffic congestion on Kauai resonate most with you?
Okay. And again, all these kind of come back, they all come back to the same story. So like I said even before, if we had a little bit more remote work, or a little bit more neighborhood agriculture work, and even like, when I said call center, when we look at a town like Kilauea, where we're trying to put our 50 acres of buildable area, I tell you what, if we wanted to, I'm sure we could get all those houses basically employed right in our area and right near our ag park. We have so much need for people in our community. So I think the number one thing is, live, play, and work where you are. And for so much of my time here, especially like when I had, Hanalei Surf Company was my business, I lived in Hanalei, flew out of Princeville, went to a movie in Kilauea, I'd put like 2,000 miles a year on my car. And I just really like to walk, even right here. Working in Le Hua, like I walked over here, for now. Like when we do more walking, I think that that's very important. And as I talked about partnering with our big landowners, it's a much bigger ask to have permanent roads. But really, when we look at a lot of our permanent roads, they are paved over what were cane haul roads. A dream I have is, instead of putting a fourth lane between Waileua River and Hanamaulu, I'd like to take that cane haul road that goes off to the right and make that be the fourth lane, so we don't have five or six years of construction. And that's another inward road. And so it can also be an emergency route, right? I think we need to have more of these emergency routes all over the island. I have ideas where we could do little feeder pieces. I recognize that it's cost, but we have to, and we're going to need to do that. I want to do one other little transportation piece.
Absolutely.
That when we have disruptive technology, like the cell phone is an example of disruptive technology, the internet is an example of disruptive technology. Another disruptive technology that we didn't seem to anticipate, 10 years ago, when we started putting in all these bike paths, 15 years ago, is the e-bikes. Oh my goodness, we got to come up with something. I watch it all the time, they're like little swarms of locusts in my town, all these little boys, mostly little boys, not just boys, I'm not being sexist, boys or girls, kids, I'll use gender-neutral words. But they run around in the dark at night, both sides of the road, completely dangerous, right through the parks. They're like, and they're so fast, and you don't hear them until they get right there. And we've got our bike path that's beautiful, we've got all these elements. I'm looking at what they're doing on Oahu. They've got both a state piece of legislation and a county. We need to be consistent everywhere, but it's not that easy. Because when you have a bike path, people might be on a walker with a stroller, all different kinds of things. And you have somebody coming at 30 miles an hour around a curve, that's not going to work out well. If you take that 30 miles around the curve and you put it on the roadway, well, they could get hit very easily by a truck. So we have always, there's new challenges. And I think, though, those e-bikes actually could be ways, if we figure out how to handle that, to minimize some of the more localized traffic, because people, when they just got to go two miles down the street, you know, it's actually not as hard on all our roadway and our air and everything else.
Great, thank you, Felicia.
Thank you. Continuing forward with the conversation about agriculture and food sustainability. Agriculture has the potential to play a larger role in Kauai's economy by providing local food, preserving open space, and contributing to economic diversification. However, challenges such as limited infrastructure, general disinterest from younger generations, and the need for startup financing persists. What is your vision for a thriving agricultural sector on Kauai, and what actions would you prioritize?
Okay, well, I live in a happy hub, Kilauea, right? We, I own this, you can live on ambient conditions. I don't like to weed, water, or work. And I have a pretty high-demand job. And my yarden rocks it. I have so much more food than I could even possibly think about eating. I try and give it away. There's so much food in Kilauea, it's hard to even give it away. I put a picker on the outside of my yard, and I have things kind of growing, so it's spilling out. Like I think edible landscaping in public places, we need that. Because like, it actually, it more than helps our economy, it helps the planet. When we don't have to ship, when we don't have to do things so far, it's remarkable how much it reduces the waste stream. And I think that there are unique crops, like turmeric, organic turmeric, you're going to find a market for that. We have specialized crops, those would be our export crops. I'm really excited about our biodiesel company in, at Gay and Robinson, it's called Pacific Biodiesel. And that's a really great crop, I'm excited that that's happening. We have our shrimp, we have a lot of different things. Those are specialized crops, those are going to be the export. I think for what creates healthy food in our grocery stores and our restaurants and stuff like that, I think there's an easy market for that here. If you do it low-scale, it doesn't actually cost that much. Our food forest, I was the treasurer for that, $14,000 in just about five years is all we paid to create this really amazing food forest. I would say that, you know, some elements, when you get higher scale, because of Food Safety Management, FSMA food, I forget, I'm terrible with acronyms, Food Safety Management Act, or something like that.
I should know that, too. I'm trying to help.
I know. You know, anyway, these things, they defy nature. We have to be really careful for things like rat lung disease, we have to be really careful. But sometimes you're so careful, you're just completely fighting nature, and you might as well be building, growing crops inside of a building. And they suggest that, but I don't. You know, nature isn't the enemy, we have to learn to work with it instead of against it. But I think our main ways for growing food economically is small-scale. And if we can have a guesthouse on those farms, usually in the area where I live, people put the person in the guesthouse, the person who really does the farming. And the person who owns the farm has to have a straight job to pay for it, because let's face it, you're not going to support a couple million-dollar piece of property with lettuce.
No.
And that, a couple million dollars is nothing anymore. $3 million is just a house on, you know, some acres, you know?
Okay, so moving on to the next question, destination management. How familiar are you with the Destination Management Action Plan?
Well, I feel like I'm pretty familiar with it. I was very excited about watching its development during our COVID window. I think that we're still seeing, here's another, Native Hawaiian Advancement Council, Native Hawaiian Advancement, right? They are the ones who took over for the Kauai Visitors Bureau for part of it, right?
Part of it, yeah.
Yep, so we have both. And I, I actually am really excited to see a Hawaiian organization do a good job of that, because that's what we really, that's how we need to brand ourselves. And it's not just a gimmick, it needs to be reality, right? It's not a gimmick, it's reality. So I think that's great. I mean, I've been involved with Waipaa and the Food Park, and, you know, NTBG, I have trouble with all these little letter things, the acronyms, National Tropical Botanical Garden. We have a lot of elements like that, that can be really good in those types of things. I want to give a shout-out to Tsukano Ho, who is Kauai Visitors Bureau, because I feel like she's always done a very good job. And I love, you know, our Moki Hana Festival and all our Hawaiian-based elements.
So let me ask you this question. What are your top one or two priorities for tourism on Kauai?
Well, I would say, my top priorities for tourism on Kauai is having them received in a really welcoming and happy way. I know that, like, having worked in, I had, Hanalei Surf Company was my business, so I was front-facing. And I love both sides of my customer base, and how I felt like I did a really good job greeting the visitors, was making sure that more than half of my business was my own little grommets, my own community, and having an authentic store. But having dealt with people who are part of interval ownership, or timeshare, or whatever we call it, I was able to really learn to love that community, because whatever anybody else might think of them, they identify with this island. After the hurricane, they were some of the very first people to show up and be, you know, cleaning up after things like the Fourth of July. They're the ones who helped, who went to help clean the beach. I remember when we have been shut down, there are people who are sending stuff from long distance, and they're not even able to come here. So I like to farm our visitors. I like to have people come regularly, so they're a part of it. And without these people who come year in and year out, things like the Boys and Girls Clubs, our medical facilities, so many of our nonprofits, our churches, I think what we saw in COVID, when we, they were gone, so many of these nonprofits and things that you don't even think about as being part of the visitors, those things, we had churches go out of business. And I don't want to call it business, but they, they couldn't keep the doors open.
Understood.
And so I want to keep our balance where we are loving up on them, and we recognize their value, and we include them in ways where they know they're welcome. And I think our Destination Management Action Plan is helping to educate and cultivate future generations. And I will say that there are multiple generations that I've watched, from the same families, that are part of our communities, and so people might consider them tourists, but I consider them a part-time residence. And I support them.
Yeah, so last question.
Yeah, last question, just shift your leg down a little bit.
Okay.
Just a little, just a little.
Okay. And I have one thing I want to say, but give me your last question, and I might convert it into that.
No, it's good. The last question, is there anything else you would like to share with the viewers?
Yes. Okay. Passionate about this one, too. And a lot of times, I know people get tired of me talking about our unhoused population. But I'm going to speak about our unhoused population, and it is heartbreaking for me to watch that community cascade further and further down. I am thankful to our county for how we have done Kaialaula, we've worked really hard to build structured houses. But you hear me championing them, even as we're talking about real property tax, because they're the downstream problem of our real property tax. And so as people get displaced, I really am going to, and I hope somebody who can help me in government, will be hearing that how important I think it is that we have three to four acres as a safety zone, and we can have real strong guidelines. I'm sure we can create criteria, where it is people that work here, or have some sort of history in the island where they're there, so we're not opening our doors to everywhere. But we do even have plenty of people who work that are without housing. And when we do these sweeps, like last month, my estimate is probably somewhere between 300 and 500 people were swept. So unsurprisingly, probably some of the fires that occurred have to do with that sweep, whether it's accidents, or anger, or the "not in my backyard" amongst the displaced people, because they don't all get along, and they don't all want to live near each other.
Can I interrupt for a second? What sweep are you talking about? Because I'm assuming you're talking about the one that happened there, the county building?
There's the one that we call the Old Mill Site, there's also Akakini, and then also down near the lighthouse in Le Hua. And then, so how it impacts all of us, did everybody notice that there's like rubbish along the sides of the road lately, like crazy? I've been like chasing that down, what's up with that? Well, there's a lot of things. But among them is, like, when these things get swept, people got to go rebuild their houses. Where are they going to go? They're going to go to the Le Hua Transfer Station, where we have the bulk rubbish, right? They're going to get their new couch, their new mattress, their new, you know, pallets. People have to, so then, so damage happens to those things that seal that in. And so we have, we have that kind of challenge going on. We have problems in the parks, we have problems with the police, we have problems in the hotels. We certainly- We certainly, I was a business person. You don't want that right in, right on your street, right? Sleeping in the car, your Alcoa at night. There's multiple areas where we spend a whole lot more than we would to put up like a few big, serious tents, have bathrooms, showers, and guidelines and where we can separate people out. Families need to be in different places than people who, maybe you're still working on good constructive habits. I mean, you know, like, but I think that's something that it's so unfair to not look at. And I have been paying attention to how many people basically die of despair. And that's not a very happy ending. Let's all be happy, but I want them to be happy. I'm going to be happy while we're all happy. If people aren't noticing others that are suffering, yay. And it still impacts you whether you're aware of it or not.
There you go. Well, thank you for your time today, Felicia. Yeah, it's been a very informative and helpful conversation. And so mahalo nui loa for joining us today. We hope these interviews give you a clearer understanding of the candidates and the future they envision for our beloved island.
We'd like to take a moment to acknowledge the incredible support that made this series possible.
First, a big thank you to the Hawaii Crop Improvement Association.
We also want to express our gratitude to the Hawaii Lodging and Tourism Association, our Kauai chapter, for their continued partnership.
And a special thanks goes out to Houikei, Kauai Community Television, for providing the platform to bring these important conversations to you.
We're also grateful for our Kauai Island Utility Cooperative for their unwavering support of community initiatives.
And thank you to KKCR, Kauai Community Radio, for helping us reach more of you across the island.
We couldn't have done this without Kekaha Agriculture Association, who have been champions of local engagement.
And last, but certainly not least, a heartfelt thank you to Meridian Pacific for their generous support of this effort.
Remember, your voice matters. Make it heard. Be sure to vote in the upcoming election and help shape the future of Kauai.
Thank you for watching. Ahouihoe.
Aloha and welcome to this special series of interviews with your Kauai County Council candidates. I'm Lexi Jones, the Vice Chair of Houikei Community Television.
And I'm Mark Periello, President of the Kauai Chamber of Commerce. We're honored to bring you these conversations, giving each candidate the opportunity to share their vision for our island's future.
Today, we'll be speaking with Fern Holland, who's eager to share her ideas and plans for our community. These interviews are an important part of our democratic process, giving you a chance to learn more about who's running and why.
Our hope is that these conversations inspire you to engage in the process and to vote. Every voice matters and your voice is crucial in shaping the future of our island.
So let's dive in. Please join us as we welcome Fern to the conversation.
Thank you.
So Fern, I am the lucky one to ask you the first question.
Fabulous.
And it's a super softball. Please tell us, tell our audience rather, about yourself and why you're taking on the kuliana of leadership in our community.
Yeah, thank you, Mark. So, you know, I was born and raised on Kauai and I love my home. I graduated from Kapua High School and went away to university where I studied environmental science. I always intended on bringing that education home to help give back and serve my community. And it's really my goal in running for office in really a way of service to my home and to the island that I love and the community that I love. You know, I've watched many of my friends have to leave. I've, you know, watched many of my classmates and friends that I've grown up with struggle with not being able to afford to live here. I struggle with being able to afford to live here. I've watched so many friends struggle with drug addiction and abuse issues. And I see so many things in our community that need to be improved. So many things that our county and our state could do to increase the quality of life for our local families. And I'd just love to be a part of helping to, you know, use my commitment and use my education to give back and to help benefit our community.
All right, thank you. We're going to be able to talk about a lot of those issues as we continue the conversation.
Absolutely. And thank you for speaking so wholeheartedly as well. Moving into a heavy hitter of a question as we all have it facing us, as you mentioned as well in that response to Mark. Kauai faces a significant challenge in providing affordable housing for its residents. The demand for affordable and workforce housing continues to outpace supply while rising housing costs and prevalent of off-island investment exacerbate, excuse me, while rising housing costs and prevalence of off-island investments exacerbate the issue. The community has been exploring various strategies to address these challenges, including increasing the supply of affordable housing, providing rental assistance and supporting community land trusts. Here's your question. Given the ongoing housing crisis on Kauai, what specific strategies would you prioritize to increase housing affordability? And how would you work to implement these strategies as a member of county council?
Thank you, Lexi. I think this is probably the largest issue we face. Collectively, it seems like everybody agrees. You know, affordable housing is our biggest issue. I think we need to tackle it in every way that we can. I think it's not just a one path to the solution. There's multiple things that we have to do. We definitely have to increase supply. And we have to look at ways that we can bring in federal funding, state funding to do so and whatever it looks like. I had the incredible honor of being the archaeological monitor on the Lima Olas site and getting to watch that project move forward. I think those kind of projects are absolutely part of the solution. I think we have great organizations like PAL and Habitat for Humanity that do incredible work and helping to partner and support that with land opportunities and acquisition and, you know, pushing those processes forward. I've noticed that we have these new rules that allow for like additional ADUs, for example, but they've been very hardly used. And I think a lot of that comes from problems that might stem more from the permitting process. And I've learned a little bit myself over the last few years about how difficult some of the planning permit process timelines can be and expectations can be. And there might be really feasible things that the county council can do to change that, the legal process that leads to these permits and really gets us where we need to go and gets people feeling confident that they can invest in an ADU, that they can move forward with some of these additional opportunities to increase housing. Absolutely, increasing supply is one of the largest things we have to address. I think, you know, the rental support and the subsidies and those things for families absolutely needs to continue as well. We really have to do everything that we can to keep local families on Kauai. It's very, very difficult. And we've seen such an increase in costs since the COVID that the whole, the whole thing really needs to be supported however we can. We also need to address our infrastructure. You know, I mean, like, I also am struggling with trying to figure out, how do I afford a septic, you know, put in to even fix my house that's like falling apart? You know, and navigating those permitting processes and navigating the septic and the infrastructure needs. You know, I support working on the county financing stuff like sewer and moving that into areas that would allow for, you know, to address some of those needs for the septic. So, you know, I think it's a, it's a multi-pronged approach. It's one of the very first things that I would really buckle down if I get elected and start to look at and categorize all of these things. I'm very organized. So I like to, you know, sit down and go through it. Okay, how do we increase supply? How do we support families in existing opportunities? You know, how do we address the infrastructure needs? And I think it's, it's, yeah, it just takes really hard work and people that are committed to figuring out the solutions and how we bring those federal and state funds in to really benefit Kauai, I think is a big role of the county council.
Absolutely. Thank you.
And so I have a follow-up question. One of the challenges, I think, with affordable housing and workforce housing is the "not in my backyard" mentality. How would you sort of help bridge the gap between our need for housing and the folks who really want to see Kauai stay sort of as it has been, right? Sort of same size, rural, all of that?
Definitely. I mean, I feel the same way. I was born and raised here. I don't want to see us overdevelop our home. I get nervous about some of those things. I think we need to think really clearly about what we want and we need to be very strategic about how we implement it. I think increasing density in core areas like Leihue, where we have more jobs, is a natural way to do that. You know, I don't want to see massive rural sprawl where we, we take out our agricultural lands. I'm actually very concerned about the loss of agricultural lands to development, particularly high-end, expensive hotel development and vacation rental and short-term, you know, holiday development. I don't really believe we should be allowing any development on Kauai that's not affordable housing at this point in time, given the situation that we're under. Yet we see, you know, expensive fancy designer homes for offshore still moving forward while we're really scrambling trying to get affordable housing. I think the other thing is really creating a mix diverse opportunity for that, you know? There's, we need to create housing in areas where families can still have backyards, you know? And I hear a lot of locals, they don't want to move into a tiny little apartment, you know, with their kids or whatever. But we also need to have higher density living and opportunities for people that do and people that, you know, want to be closer to, say, the core of Leihue or, you know, their job or whatever it is. And I think being smart about where and how we develop that land so that we don't just open the gates to massive development that sees us lose the history and culture that we all love about Kauai. I think it's, it's kind of going to be a difficult thing to navigate. And I think that's what's really important about having people that can, you know, sift through these things and tease through, how do we make sure that we're not, you know, opening the floodgates to the kind of development either we don't want to see or we don't want in that location? And how do we really move forward to increase affordable housing in a meaningful way? And I think it's a delicate balance, you know?
All right. Thank you, Fern. So moving on, the next question is about economic diversification. So Kauai's economy, as you know, has long relied on tourism, which leaves the island vulnerable to economic downturns as we saw during the pandemic. There is a growing need to diversify the economy to create more resilient and sustainable economic opportunities for our residents. Potential sectors for diversification include agriculture, technology, healthcare, renewable energy and the arts. So here's the question. What is your vision for economic diversification for Kauai? And which sectors do you believe hold the most promise for the island's future? And then I have a follow-up as well.
Okay. Yeah, no, thank you for that question. I think it's a really important conversation also. I, you know, I'll start by saying that I don't necessarily think that tourism is going anywhere. I think it's quite clear that that's, you know, a big part of our economy. I do think it's critical that we diversify for many reasons, like you mentioned. You know, there's the possibility that that slows down for a multitude of reasons. But I think a lot of what the focus should be around tourism is really shifting the focus of what tourism looks like for us, right? We're hearing a lot more conversation about regenerative tourism, about eco-tourism. You know, in my degree at university where I studied environmental science, that was actually part of the conversation about eco-tourism. There was whole courses on, you know, how do we facilitate environmental-based tourism? And I think there's some things that could be adjusted to make tourism more sustainable and also more beneficial directly to local families. I feel like a lot of locals feel like the only way that they tap into the tourism market is their, you know, service job or is their, you know, desk job at Hertz, you know, where a lot of this money is leaving Kauai. I think we need to really think outside of the box about how to change that. How do we allow local families to better tap into the tourism market and directly receive money and income from, from these tourists that are bringing huge amounts of money without just it being a minimum wage job or a barely survivable job while most of the money goes to big corporations offshore? And so I think there's a lot of stuff that we can work on in tourism, but we absolutely need to diversify beyond tourism. And, you know, agriculture is my favorite. As the Director of Fair and Sustainable Food Systems for HAPLA, that's my passion. It's my work. I've worked in the agricultural circle of transforming agriculture and, you know, looking at the impacts of industrialized monocrop agriculture while also trying to transition us into like a more regenerative model of truly food-producing, sustainable agriculture systems. And so that's a passion of mine. It's my day job. It's what I've worked for, you know, well over 15 years now on. And I'm really passionate about seeing that through. I would love to see us expand agriculture in a way that's healthy for our people, healthy for our environment and further amplifies all the opportunities, even around tourism, to bring money in and to expand our economy. And it's also a survival thing, you know? We import 80% of our, 90% of our food, depending on the numbers, every month. And that's a security issue. It's a homeland security issue. It's a survival issue. It's, you know, food security is a really, really big concern for us. We're the most isolated landmass in the world. We need to produce our own food. So I'm really, really passionate about that part of agriculture. And I think there's huge possibility for both local food production and export markets. I mean, we saw yesterday even with the chocolate expansion, you know? There's so much possibility. We have year-round growing conditions. I mean, there's a reason that large plantation interests, that big biotech interests have come to Hawaii and utilized our agricultural land for so long. And that's because we have ample water, great land, you know, year-round growing conditions and a, and a society that has largely, you know, built on the back of agriculture. So I think there's a huge benefit there. I think there's also great opportunity for stuff that you mentioned, tech and educational opportunities, entertainment and the arts. There's, there's so much. And I think finding the balance and just being thoughtful about how we go forward in a way that really sets us up for the future. And how do we set this up in a long-term, sustainable way that spreads our, you know, opportunities across? So we're not dependent upon one thing. We're not limited to one thing, but that we're still, you know, not just giving away our natural resources in liquidation for the betterment of money, right? So how do we do all of those things while preserving our culture, while preserving our way of life, while preserving our country lifestyle? How do we do all those things in a way that, you know, makes local families benefit rather than offshore corporations? I mean, that's my priority.
All right. Are there any specific ideas that you have about how to go about that?
Which one?
You get to pick, you get to pick, right? You know, right, so agriculture, right? How do we get to a place where we're more sustainable and less dependent?
Right, okay, great. So with agriculture, I think there's a lot of opportunities, particularly within the state, to help push for tax breaks, exemptions, support for farmers and expanding farmers to produce. I think there's holes in the system that need to be patched. And what I've learned with amazing opportunities like food hubs and different kind of middlemen to help between the producers and the consumers and help things go to market, I think is really, really important. The more that we can fill those holes, you know, we're lacking infrastructure, the slaughterhouses for meat production, you know, packaging, storage. I think figuring out ways and systems to provide for the market what the market needs in a local thing, like in a local way, is totally the goal. But how do, how do we get there, you know? And that's the kind of stuff I work on every year in the state legislature. I'm a lobbyist during the state legislative session for agriculture stuff. There is a huge amount of network across Kauai working to expand agriculture. There's a great network of people that have great ideas. Every year, we implement great measures into the House and the Senate to see very few come out the other end, right? But there is so much opportunity. I also really love what Maui did with creating a Department of Agriculture on a county level. I think there's a huge benefit to just what, filling that gap, using that department as a way to bridge the gaps, fill things in, bring it in, you know, drive it home. How do we drive these goals of 50% increased food production? How do we drive that home without a real rigorous plan? And I think that's all of our responsibilities at all level of government, both for the food security issue and for the economy and for the expansion of the economy. I think there's so many holes that can be filled just by really sitting down and coming up with solutions and meeting consumers and markets where they are and then going back to the farmers and supporting them and being able to make that market, you know? A farmer's not going to grow something he knows he can't sell. And there's a certain level of, we've shaped our agriculture around tourism and we've shaped our agriculture around a handful of things. And we saw that after COVID, how difficult that was for a lot of farmers. And really just, I think, bridging those gaps is the most important thing we can do.
All right, thank you, Fern.
Really appreciate that. Okay, moving on to question number four, which is focused on climate change and environmental sustainability. Right in your wheelhouse, girl. Kauai is particularly vulnerable to impacts of climate change, including coastal erosion, extreme weather events and threats to natural habitats. Addressing climate change and promoting environmental sustainability are critical for the island's future. Kauai has explored various strategies, including coastal protection, renewable energy adoption, waste reduction and sustainable agriculture. Here's your question. How would you address climate change and promote environmental sustainability on Kauai? Please describe one specific project or initiative you would champion as a county council member.
Thank you. I am very passionate about environmental protection.
Yes.
It is why I went to school. I studied for seven years in Griffith University in Australia. I have a Bachelor's of Science with triple majors in fields of environment, marine biology, wildlife management and environmental science. And really throughout my, you know, studies and professional career, this is a huge amount of my focus. It's like, how do we address our, our environment? My, my deep passion is really the protection of our native ecosystems, which we're seeing collapse and further pressured by climate change. The marine environment is really where I started. The marine environment is really where I started, you know, falling in love with the ocean, growing up here on Kauai, wanting to protect marine wildlife, watching the global collapse of ecosystems, particularly our marine ecosystems. I feel very deeply, it's, it's something that does drive me. I think there's, you know, there's a lot of great organizations that are already, you know, driving forward really good environmental policies and practices. I, I have Compost Kauai. I don't know if anybody else does that, but Compost Kauai, I've been a member of them for the last year or so since they started. I think, you know, addressing our waste is a big part of that. And I love that they're part of the solution in that. I think, you know, unfortunately, while there's a lot of fun things I'd love to talk about when it comes to, you know, how do we protect our beaches? How do we protect our shorelines? How do we restore our ecosystems? Unfortunately, we're staring down an incredibly, incredibly big problem with this landfill and waste.
Yes.
And we are going to be really adding to our climate impact if we have to start shipping all of our waste overseas or offshore, back to the continental United States. And I think we really need to address that. And solutions like composting and, and working to divert waste away from the landfill is, is a, is a huge project I would love to take on. You know, I've worked on some of the largest landfills in Australia. I've done water quality monitoring around some of these massive landfills. And I've, I understand how they're structured. I understand how they work and, and how they fill. And I really think that my education and background would help to help us drive that process forward, which we've been needing for decades. You know, we're decades into needing a landfill. Where, where's our landfill? And what are we going to do in a couple of years when, when that closes? And I think unfortunately, from an environmental perspective, that's one of the largest issues that we really face. I think there's a lot of other ways that we can really increase our resiliency. You know, a lot of people know that for the last four years, I've been really working to try to come up with an alternative solution for Waialua Nui Ahouano, what's commonly referred to as the former Cocoa Palms Hotel, which is an incredible historical, cultural site and environmental site that's just got so much environmental and ecological services to give back to our people and our, our land.
Yeah.
I think managing our water and looking at systems like, like Waialua, which is the wettest place in the world, which has incredible, you know, water flow and movement through old irrigation systems that really should be restored for water flow. How do we manage our coastal areas holistically? And how do we build resilience? Because, you know, I, I was exposed to a lot of stuff in my university degree about climate change adaptation. You know, I took atmospheric chemistry when I fell in love with chemistry, which I never thought I'd do, ever. But, you know, I learned so much and then there was so much conversation about how communities around the world are adapting, like climate change adaptation. How do we adapt to the changes if we can't stop them, right? And a lot of that goes back to my core principle things that I really want to fight for, like agriculture. You know, agriculture collectively is the largest negative impacting thing to the climate globally. Industrialized agriculture has been identified as the biggest impact. Agriculture is also the biggest solution. It's, it's the thing that extracts carbon out of our environment. It's the thing that, you know, limits our climate footprint by producing our own local food. And there's a whole mirage of benefits to, to our environment if we're engaging in truly regenerative agriculture practices. And so it is the solution in a lot of ways. So that, that being my big passion kind of overlays very much so with that environmental fight and why I'm, I'm even in the conversation about agriculture, right? So I think that's definitely part of it. I could go on and on about this topic, but I'm going to stop.
No, it's good. Thank you so much. We can definitely see that the passion is very there and you have the skills and knowledge behind it. So we appreciate that.
My turn?
Yes, sir.
All right. We're, we're almost done. So the next question is about transportation and traffic congestion. So while visitors contribute to traffic congestion on Kauai, the surge in traffic when schools returned, resumed in August underscores the impact of resident commuters on the island's transportation system. In addition to infrastructure improvements, Kauai has been exploring various efforts to reduce traffic congestion, such as expanding bus services, developing safer bike lanes, and encouraging walking through improved sidewalks and pathways. However, our island's rural nature and the dependence on cars present unique challenges. Turn the page. Question, what solutions to ease traffic congestion on Kauai resonate most with you? And how can we reduce reliance on single occupancy vehicles and expand alternative transportation methods that are accessible and appealing to residents?
Thank you, Mark. I think this is something that everybody on Kauai gets frustrated at some point. We're like, we live in such a rural environment. Why is the traffic so bad?
Yeah.
I think there's a lot of little things that we have to cut away at, you know? I think the bus, like you mentioned, absolutely. I know we're struggling very greatly to get bus drivers. So I think that seems to be one of the limiting factors we're dealing with is the lack of being able to find bus drivers. I mean, we, we need to address that. We need to figure out what that is. How do we entice people to get the qualifications to be a bus driver? How do we, you know, resume, there's now no buses on Sunday? But there's also all the conversation about all the people that aren't going to use the bus, right? That, like you say, you know, that, that addresses a certain market of people that need transport. How do we also improve our, our access for kids to get to school? You know, I know that there's been huge problems with the state this year, just, you know, doing the same thing, getting the drivers and the funding to be able to ensure that the students even have buses, you know? So, so absolutely, we need to look at those kind of things. I think we need to look at the problem areas. I mean, it took a really long time to get that additional lane in Waialua. I think over like a decade, 15 or 20 years or something it took us to do.
Very long time.
You know, at least that, I mean, as long as I can remember, I think since I could vote, I've been, I've been talking about that conversation. So I think there's, you know, there's those kind of things and figuring out, how do we support those projects that are really state projects? Because the highway is obviously a state department of transport. How do we encourage, you know, maybe carpooling? I think we need to think outside of the box and look at other communities. One of the things that I think we should really do as a small island community is look at other places around the world where small communities have tackled these issues. How have they done that? You know, the park and ride conversation that's happening?
Yeah.
You know, you, I think more support for tourism off the roads definitely is, is a solution, even though yes, we have the, the residential required, you know, boost in getting kids to and from school and, and all that. And I think, you know, we have to look at it collectively. I also think there's, you know, I think it's, it's important for us to look at alternative routes and have those kind of possibilities open for extreme situations, like when the highway gets shut down because of a fatality, when there's a storm, when, you know, the, the bridge gets knocked out because, you know, because there's problems. All of these kind of things, we have, we have to also look at for the safety. I think we need to have routes that are available, even if they're not always available. And, and how do we, you know, ensure that that's a possibility as well? I get very hesitant with, you know, these proposals to build massive highways through the island and, you know, build these massive freeways and stuff like that, because that's not Kauai. And I think real local families and people that are born and raised, none of us want to really see it turn into a giant little LA in the middle of the ocean, right? And if you build massive freeways, I mean, we know, we know what that leads to, right? So I think we need to think really carefully about how do we address these things? Because they definitely need to be addressed. And how do we do so without losing our way of life, right? And, and I think it, like, a lot of these conversations, like affordable housing, it, it needs to be very thoughtfully meticulously gone through. You know, how do we do this? Is this going to work? What's this going to lead to? And we got to do a little bit of all those things. We need to, you know, invest wherever we can to address the problem areas.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Great. Moving into question number six.
How many questions do we have?
I'm pretty sure seven.
Awesome.
And this one again is right up your alley.
Yeah, it is, for sure.
This one is for sure. Agriculture and food sustainability, girl.
Girl.
All right. Agriculture has the potential to play a larger role in Kauai's economy for providing local food, preserving open space, and contributing to economic diversification. However, challenges such as limited infrastructure, general disinterest from younger generations, and the need for starting up financially persist. What is your vision for a thriving agricultural sector on Kauai? And what actions would you prioritize as a county council member to support this vision? Please describe a policy or initiative you would introduce to help achieve your vision.
Awesome. Thank you. I feel like we've already talked.
I know, in the best way, yeah.
Which I'm, I'm fine with that, but.
You could read it right with like.
You know, yeah, like I've said a lot of what I really am passionate about with agriculture. And I think there are great solutions and I work on those solutions every year. Like I said, in, in the state capital, trying to, you know, push through some of these support measures for farmers, some of these opportunities to really like expand into regenerative agricultural. I think we need to address education. We need to help to educate. We need to help to support the younger generation and feeling empowered. We need to make it financially feasible for farmers to farm and what that looks like. And we have some great examples here locally that we've, we've just all celebrated and talked about.
Yeah.
There's some great opportunities and great examples of what can be done when people really do invest in that idea of truly creating a sustainable regenerative product that, you know, is, you know, even for export, for local, whatever it is. But there's a, a market for it, right? And I think that's critical. I also, you know, personally, and there's a lot of things I'd like to introduce. I'm not going to give them all away here, but there's a lot of great opportunities, I think, for the county to partner with the state agencies to help to finance and support, to help to drive that initiative for the hospitals, the schools to produce local food.
Yes.
By looking at who we already have here, who is willing to expand? What kind of support do they need? And that's why I would really look at trying to introduce a Department of Agriculture, like they did on Maui, or a position within the county, or some sort of role where we actually have someone dedicated to bridging that, to, you know, closing those gaps and, and figuring out how we work with the Department of Agriculture and how do we work with these statewide organizations that are really creating amazing, amazing headway? There's incredible farms throughout Hawaii, Ma'au farms, organic farms, Anahu, an incredible opportunity for people in the community, not just to grow food, not just to be inspired by ag, but to reconnect to Aina, to reconnect to community, to, to heal. You know, they take youth that are struggling, people that might be struggling in the community, and they re-instill a passion for agriculture and in a way that is meaningful to people. And I think it, there's so much opportunity for that kind of work here, you know? I would really love to see us move away from this 150-year mindset of monocrop style industrialized agriculture into something that truly shows the beauty of a mono kolani po, of food production, of the garden islands. You know, we have the opportunity to produce a huge amount of food. We could be a food basket for Hawaii, for Anahu. We could be, you know, so much of an agricultural community that is healthy, that is long sustaining, where the money really stays in our community rather than seeing historically so much of this effort, you know, move offshore. We've seen, you know, large biotech chemical corporations lease our land for a dollar an acre a year for many, many years. We've seen, you know, arguably very concerning practices happen and land used in liquidation with no concern for the future of how that soil and how that land is going to be used. And I think we have the opportunity to switch that to become a regenerative agricultural society that's based on, you know, food production and agro tourism, that's, that's environmentally sustainable, that's ecologically sustainable, and that inspires people to eat locally grown foods. We can grow stuff, you know, that can be shared around the world to a lot of places that don't, you know? I get very disappointed when I go to the store and I see, you know, avocados from Mexico and Costa Rica and, and these things where you're like, the best avocados I've ever seen in my life. Like, why are we ordering avocados from, you know, bananas from Costa Rica? Like, what's going on, you know, like? And I, I think there's just, again, there's holes in the market that can be filled and I think would make an incredibly big difference to reshaping our agricultural sector and, and really making it profitable and really making it beneficial for communities. Yeah.
Great. Thank you so much.
So we have one more question and then you're, you're closing. So how familiar are you with the Kauai Destination Management Action Plan?
Is that the whole question?
Nope. I'm going to make this as easy for you as possible, so right.
Oh, I'm fairly familiar with it. It's been a couple of years since I read it, but I did read through the whole thing a couple of years ago and I, I kind of went through what I like about it.
All right. Well, that's the question. Right. What are your top one or two priorities for tourism on Kauai, especially as they relate to the, the Kauai Destination Management Action Plan?
Thank you. Yeah. So I really do love, you know, the vision of making tourism more beneficial for the community, less extractive, I've heard, you know, referred to it, and really focusing on that ecotourism side of things. So that's something I really appreciate. And I know that, you know, there's been a lot of work over a really long period of time to implement these things in the Destination Management Action Plan and, and what that looks like. And I, and I'm happy to see that happening. Like, we've seen some great signage going in, educational signage. I think all that kind of stuff is great as well. I would love to see a, a real boost in how we support the ecotourism sector, how we create, you know, more opportunities for locals again, so that the money stays here, for locals to be able to tap into the tourism market directly, whether that's, you know, the uncle selling coconuts at the lookout or whether that's, you know, somebody, you know, being able to do tours in some way. Obviously, we need controls and all that kind of stuff, obviously. But I would love to see us navigate pathways for local families to be able to tap into the tourism market and be able to, in, in turn, be able to stay here on Kauai, right? And be able to afford to live here because, you know, they're caught, we're constantly being squeezed out.
Absolutely.
And, and so I think there's the great opportunity to figure that out in a way that also limits tourism to certain areas. I think the more that we can direct our guests and, and help them get there. If you could go to all the main spots that you want to see on Kauai over a three-day period without renting a car, you know, without needing to think, without needing to drive on our roads that arguably are not well established for cars.
Right.
You, you know, we'd have a lot less problems. We'd have less dangerous driving situations with tourists. We'd have, you know, less cars in the road and less traffic. And we'd have our tourists going to where we want them to go, right? And seeing what, you know, kind of managing that. And I think we've seen things like Hianna Master Plan start to do that. How do we cap these areas that are really inundated? And I think that's an important part of the plan as well. And I think focusing on the ecotourism and sustainable side of that and creating those opportunities while figuring out how we corral and, you know, address the footprint of tourism, I think is really important.
Okay.
Wow, yes.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Is that your whole question?
That's my whole question.
Oh, Roger. Okay, cool. Just making sure. Okay, to finish us up for today, is there anything else you would like to share with the viewers and individuals watching today's interview?
I'm thankful for the opportunity, guys. I, I always enjoy talking with you guys. I appreciate, you know, the opportunity to share a little bit about me and what I do. You know, I'm very active in the community. I, I feel like I should share like my website and know that people can reach out to me. So like, you know, I'm available, I'm available at votfern.com. All my information is there and you're absolutely able to reach out to me anytime. I am an open door. I'm very approachable.
Yes.
Despite some rumors, I'm very, very approachable. And I, you know, I'm happy to talk story. People call me about all kinds of things. So, you know, I'm, I'm an open door. Feel free to reach out. I have a lot of information on my website, a lot of information about who I am and why I do what I do and where I stand on some of these core issues. And yeah, I'm really honored for the opportunity. I'm honored for the opportunity to campaign for county council to represent my community. And if Kauai decides that they would like me to serve, I will wholeheartedly serve and invest my heart into the betterment of our island home. And yeah, I just really appreciate you guys and the chamber and Hoike and the opportunity.
Well, thank you.
So thank you for being with us today. It was a true pleasure. It always is a pleasure to talk to you, Fern. And so thank you for your time today. And then Mahalo Nui Loa for joining us today. We hope these interviews give you a clearer understanding of the candidates and the future they envision for our beloved island.
Absolutely. And we'd like to take a moment to acknowledge the incredible support of those that made it possible today.
So first, a big thank you to the Hawaii Crop Improvement Association.
We also want to express our gratitude to the Hawaii Lodging and Tourism Association, our Kauai chapter, for their continued support.
And a very special thanks to Hoike Kauai Community Television for providing the platform to bring these important conversations to you.
Absolutely. And we're also grateful for the Kauai Island Utility Cooperative for their unwavering support of our community initiatives.
And thank you to KKCR, Kauai Community Radio, for helping us reach more of you across the island.
Absolutely. We couldn't have done it without, we couldn't have done this without the Keikaha Agriculture Association, who have been champions of local engagement.
And last, but certainly not least, a heartfelt thanks to Meridian Pacific for their generous support of this effort.
And remember, your voice matters. Make it heard. Be sure to vote in the upcoming election and hope, excuse me, and help to shape the future of Kauai.
All right. Thank you again for watching. Aloha and until next time.
Ahoiho.
Ahoiho. Aloha and welcome to this special series of interviews with the Kauai County Council candidates. I'm Mark Periello, President at the Kauai Chamber of Commerce.
And I'm Lexi Jones, the Vice Chair of Hoi Ke Community Television. We're honored to bring you these conversations, giving each candidate the opportunity to share their vision of our, of our island's future.
Today we'll be speaking with Kipukai Kuoli'i, who's eager to share his ideas and plans for our community. Welcome, Kipukai.
Aloha.
These interviews are an important part of our democratic process, giving you the chance to learn about the candidates who are running and why.
Our hope is that these conversations inspire you to engage in the process and to vote. Every voice matters and your vote is critical in shaping the future of Kauai.
So let's dive right in. Please join us in welcoming Kipukai to the conversation.
Aloha.
As we begin, please tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're taking on the kuliana of leadership in our community.
Oh, I'm Kipukai Kuoli'i. I'm native Hawaiian and Portuguese. I was born and raised here. I went to Kamehameha High School. I went to college on the continent. I spent like over 10 years away working in city government and very active in my union and in the social justice movement and the LGBT movement. And I spent two years also in Washington DC, working for the Civil Rights Department at the FLCIO. But I moved home in early 2000 and I started paying attention to council. And there were a few council members that I was very, you know, I liked what they were doing. And then they left, so I kind of thought, oh, maybe I can do this and I should step up and with my community organizing background and, you know, my love for the island and I thought I could have something to contribute. And I've been doing it for a little bit now, so. I think I'm doing a good job, so I want to continue doing that for the voters.
Nice. Thank you, Kipukai. So let's dive into some of the tough issues facing our island these days. One of them being housing. As you know, Kauai faces a significant challenge in providing affordable housing for its residents. Demand for affordable and workforce housing continues to outpace supply, while rising housing costs and the prevalence of off-island investment exacerbate the issue. The community has been exploring various strategies to address these challenges, including increasing the supply of affordable housing, providing rental assistance, and supporting community land trusts. Here is the question. Given the ongoing housing crisis on Kauai, what specific strategies would you prioritize to increase affordable and workforce housing or housing affordability in general? And how would you work to implement these strategies?
Thank you. Our housing shortage crisis is absolutely the, probably the number one challenge, if not number one, right near the top. It's been something we've talked about for a long time. I think in the last couple of councils, we've been taking some action. I have, it's my passion, addressing the housing shortage. I've been the Chair of the Housing and Intergovernmental Relations Committee for the last couple of terms. I've worked very closely with our Housing Director, Adam Roversi. Not last term, but the term before, we worked on a total update to our Housing Ordinance, Ordinance 860. And what we were trying to do is we were trying to incentivize more private development and incentivize more development, high-density development in our town core areas. So what we did was we reduced the requirement, the assessment from 30% to 20%, which could actually be even lower because developers has the right to invoke some of the exemptions when they do certain types of housing. We redefined what workforce housing is. We brought the 140% AMI price line down to 120%. So 120% and higher would be handled by market housing or private developers. We extended the term of affordability from 20 years to 50 years. We increased the assessment for resorts. Any new hotel development will have to do 50% workforce housing, affordable housing requirements. And then we also exempt the high-density town core areas so we can have more apartment buildings. We need housing of all types, right? And we think that in the high-density areas like Lehuie, for example, we need more apartments, town halls, duplexes, fourplexes. And the infrastructure is all there in place and with more development and smaller development, those inevitably would be and could be lower-priced homes. And then we also are incentivizing those town cores. Right now, we started with Lehuie, Koloa and Kalahail. But in the second round of updates to our ordinances, we're going to add, I think, Waimea, Ke'akahua, a couple more. That's just the ordinance policy upgrade. One big thing we've done more recently in our last budget cycle, so let me go back. Our Housing Development Fund. So that's where we have funds dedicated to housing that our Housing Director, Adam Roversi, manages and puts towards different projects. So in September, we passed a 2% annual appropriation requirement. So 2% of all our real property taxes will go into this housing fund. That has been approximately $4 million. Well, in this last round of budget, the mayor proposed and the council accepted and, you know, passed, moving the tax rate for transient vacation rentals up to the same level as resort and hotel. That resulted in an additional $8 million and the mayor intended, dedicated that amount to the housing fund and the council agreed. Also during the tax, the budget cycle, the council, by a 5-2 vote, actually approved while we have this new tiered structure with how we can do our real property tax rates. And the council approved the tiered structured rates for transient vacation rentals, slight increases that would bring in an additional 7 million. So this new budget year, we have like quadrupled our Housing Development Fund. And we know too that our housing agency has been doing a lot of good affordable housing projects and I'll tell you about some of them in just a bit. And so their inability to move forward was because of funding. So even though they're going after federal funds and state funds and tax credits, with more funding, we, we know they can do more housing. So just as an example of some of the housing that are underway, because I just got my monthly update from our Housing Director the other day. In Lehuie, there's the Wright Street Apartments that are underway. Well, 66 units right there on the corner where the Central Pacific Building is. That's going to be affordable apartment building apartments, four stories, built right up to the sidewalk, the city style, right? Where you can now have cafes and stuff on the street. But four stories, the bottom floor is commercial and the top three floors will be affordable units, 66 of them. They are breaking ground by the end of this year. In Kilauea, we are planning for affordable housing there in the new area, just behind the new commercial area of Kilauea Town. They're having their second town hall meeting next month. And then in Waimea, the 400 acres of Waimea, when we acquired those lands, we used some of our housing funds and some federal housing funds for that. So now we are required to also do affordable housing rental projects there. And they're working with the community to see what shape it'll take, the best form. And then, of course, we have Lima Ola, which is our biggest project in Eleele, a whole new community of sorts with park areas and surrounded by single-family homes. The single-family homes are underway. The first eight, I believe, are being constructed. We have senior housing, 40 units. And that's, move-in is in October. And then we have multifamily affordable units, 45 units, move in in November. So a lot is happening and more can happen if we invest more money into it. So I think to a certain degree, if you look at the different counties, Kauai is sort of leading the way when it comes to affordable housing. And I think it's because the mayor, the Housing Director and the council have been working very, very well together.
Thank you, Kipukai.
Thank you. Deep insight. Moving forward into our next topic, which would be economic diversification. Kauai's economy has long relied on tourism, which leaves the island vulnerable to economic downturns, such as during the pandemic. Potential sectors of diversification include agriculture, technology, healthcare, renewable energy, and the arts. What is your vision for economic diversification on Kauai? And which sectors do you believe hold the most promise for the island's future?
I can't really say that I myself have the vision, but I know that the people of Kauai and different organizations and, and what I want to point to is the Kauai Comprehensive Economic Development Strategic Plan that's in place now for 2022 to 2026. So our Office of Economic Development plays a role in that. The Chamber, a lot of business organizations, they have these industry cluster working groups. And so the people from those different industries kind of give their mana'o and inputs on what, what are we going to do? How are we moving forward? How can we do better? How can we attract more business? How can we support more business? So build and attract and retain the 20th century workforce. We have to work with our schools, even probably as early as high school, to start training the workforce for the industries that we want to promote. And obviously, we should be promoting industries or, you know, these areas within our economy that has higher-paying jobs. The cost of living is, is so high here, right? So, and ag makes sense because we have a lot of great fertile land and we have a lot of different farmers already trying, you know? And I think we just need to support them more, even with land to begin with and water. But it is about supporting the businesses so that they can support the community with jobs. And obviously, as when it comes to ag, also with us being more sustainable so that in the long run, we can provide more of our own food.
Excellent. All right. Thank you, Kipukai. So our next question is about climate change and environmental sustainability. Kauai is particularly vulnerable to the impacts of climate change, including coastal erosion, extreme weather events, and threats to natural habitats. Addressing climate change and promoting environmental sustainability are critical for the island's future. Kauai has explored various strategies, including coastal protection, renewable energy adoption, waste production, and sustainable agriculture. How would you address climate change and promote environmental sustainability on Kauai?
Absolutely. So I don't know if people realize, but I read somewhere, we have 90 miles of sandy shoreline and that's more than any other island in the state here in Hawaii. I think the most important thing to do, and we're working on it now, led by our Office of Economic Development, the Kauai Climate Change Adaptation Plan. That's underway. Basically, they need to inventory the top climate change-related potential impact areas, if you will. And then with all the stakeholders and with community input, developing a framework of how to best respond. And obviously, we have to protect our infrastructure. We have to conserve fresh water for our farmers. We have to protect our rare native species. And most, most, we have to protect our people and their, their private property, right? We do have some properties now that are in jeopardy and along the coast. And I know we have a great planning department and all the work that they're doing. I think, again, they're leading the way, our Kauai Planning Department, with climate change response and all. But with our West Kauai Community Plan, they've put into the plan as well something called managed retreat, where with the county's 400 acres in the west side there, the county will dedicate some of those lands, according to the plan, to help people who are living right on the coast that are jeopardized to move to, you know? And while it's a great expense, I guess the county is planning to help, help with the land piece of it.
So a quick follow-up question. So there's quite a list of things to do. Describe one specific project or initiative you would champion.
I absolutely want to work closely with the Office of Economic Development and with planning. And I think they're the experts and the business community as well. I don't know specifically, you know, it might take some funding. I know right now, there's small levels of funding with studies and what have you. But I do think it's important to plan for the future. And maybe, I mean, I don't know that it's needed. I'm not sure as far as planning regulations and bills that are in place, but to not be making the problem worse, but allowing certain types of development right up. And we have our, you know, shoreline setback regulations. And in fact, just a couple of years ago, I was part of a bill that, that updated that shoreline regulation, so.
One of the first in the country, I believe.
Yeah, yeah. When we originally did it, for sure.
Absolutely. Well, thank you. Now, some transitioning to transportation and traffic congestion. While visitors contribute to traffic congestion on Kauai, the surge in traffic when schools resume in August underscores the impact of resident commuters on the island's transportation system. In addition to the infrastructure improvements, Kauai has been exploring various efforts to reduce traffic congestion, such as expanding bus services, developing safer bike lanes, and encouraging walking through improved sidewalks and pathways. However, our island's rural nature and the dependence on cars is very present and creates unique challenges. A question. What solutions to ease traffic congestion on Kauai resonate with you most?
I think some of the things you mentioned, and I think we have to do all of it. We absolutely, I live in Anahola, so I drive to Lehuie every day and I have to deal with traffic myself, sometimes worse than others. But I think we need to continue working with the state to make sure that our contra-flow operations are well-managed and that continues. Whenever it's not operational, we definitely hear from people. But I also think we need to work with the state and maybe private landowners to look at potentially acquiring lands that could help us do additional access and maybe bypass roads. And I think we could help the island a lot by maybe having a access bypass road from Koloa to Puhie and then also another one from Puhie to Anhanamalu. So that maybe people could avoid the coming through Lehuie. If you were trying to go from the west side to the north shore, you can just avoid Lehuie altogether if you can drive around. And the future is going to, future development in Lehuie is going to require us having more roadways as well. So that additional, you know, bypass routes, you know? And I do think that, you know, now is a time, big projects like that, roads and everything, takes an enormous amount of money. But under this Biden administration, there has been big infrastructure bills passed with, you know, more money than has ever been made available to states and counties. So we need to make sure, and I, I believe our administration is going after some of those monies, but we need to get, go after as many of, much of that as possible, especially when it comes to our roads and our bridges, the infrastructure.
All right. Thank you, Kipukai. So food sustainability is up next. Agriculture has the potential to play a larger role in Kauai's economy by providing local food, preserving open space, and contributing to economic diversification. However, challenges such as limited infrastructure, general disinterest from younger generations, and the need for startup financing persist. What is your vision for a thriving agricultural sector on Kauai? And what actions would you take to support your priorities?
Again, I will point to the Kauai Community Economic Development Strategic Plan because like I said, there were these different structures. And so I looked at the agriculture and food sustainability cluster and got some ideas from there. But before I share that list, I'll also say we need to continue the successes that we have and expand on them, like our Sunshine Markets. You know, we've already added the EBT where people can use their EBT cards at the. where people can use their EBT cards at the Sunshine Markets. But Sunshine Markets is supporting our farmers and then it's also supporting our people, right? Bringing them together for fresh fruits and vegetables and all the things that people are growing. But also, we need to support the agricultural parks. We have Ainaho Okupu o Kilauea, which is a beautiful example of the county allow, you know, helping them get started with land and some help with the water infrastructure. And then it just taking off where they're having, I mean, they've built like a pavilion and everything. They've grown so much over the years and now they distribute all those produce boxes with the food bank and everything. So that's one example of success. And we need more of that, like what's going on in Kilauea, we need in different parts of the island.
Great. And then
Oh, I did want to go through this list. It's probably some of the stuff you've heard because it's right off of the SEDS plan. Increase use of technology tools in farming and agriculture. Support students as young as elementary in explore, in exploring ag-related programs and careers. Support organizations like STEM-related AgTech, 4H, GoFarm, Future Farmers of Hawaii and our Cattlemen's Association. Yeah, that's just to share some.
Perfect.
Thank you.
And continuing forward about destination management. Kauai Destination Management Action Plan, DMAP, aims to manage tourism in a way that benefits residents and visitors alike by promoting sustainable practices and enhancing community engagement. What are your top one or two priorities for tourism on Kauai, especially as they relate to DMAP?
Yeah, I think this destination management plan is incredibly important. And I think us having gone through, as an island and a community, having gone through COVID made us see how we couldn't just keep doing things the same way. So it's super important that we redefine pretty much everything we do, but being that tourism is our, you know, bread and butter and our number one industry, we want to have a better tourism. And I think one of the ways they call it was regenerative tourism. And I think that, that KVB, the Visitors Bureau, is leading the way with this destination management plan. And the goal being to rebuild, redefine and reset the direction of tourism, I think it's critically important. I think more and more people from the community, especially statewide, are stepping forward. I love the things I've read in Ainaloa Economic Futures and how so many native Hawaiians are engaged and involved with that and grow in that organization and even coming up with, with policy recommendations. Most of them are for, for the legislature. And I think some of them for the county we already have in place. But I think if we just keep going back to community, we will get the answers on how, how to best move forward. And it is important that we do that shift and thinking of now it's more about honoring the host community and the, our own ecosystem, ecosystems and figure out a way to make the visitors need, still meet the visitors' needs and still meet the the market demand approach, but with all those things in mind and not ju, it's not just about making money, right? It's about giving a positive experience to everyone and then leaving the place better than you found it, right? And, you know, not just taking from the place, but giving back to the place too. And I think it's exciting because we have a culture and we have a way that people can benefit from and we can make that visitor experience even better by highlighting the culture more, the, the concepts of malamaaina and kulianna, that you have a responsibility even as a tourist coming here to take care of our place, you know? And then the beautiful experiences that you have now, you can come back 10 years and, and have it again, you know?
That's the point, right? Yeah. What, how we leave the place 10 years from now and even beyond. So the last question isn't really a question. Is there anything else you'd like to share with our audience today?
Oh, I guess I just really need your support and I, I feel like I've been doing a good job. I hope you think so too. And that being on the council has been, you know, a privilege and an honor and I'm just, you know, so grateful and so it's, it's a job that I love and enjoy. Community organizing, I think the diversity that everyone brings, you know, you be yourself, you bring forward who you have, who you are and you contribute. And I've been dedicated and hardworking and I, I term out after one more term. And I, I want to actually help other young people get elected as well. And then I'll stay busy in my Hawaiian homestead community and some other works in different ways as well.
There you go. Well, thank you for your time today, Kipukai.
Thank you both. Thank you both.
That was a pleasure.
Definitely.
Aloha.
So mahalo nui loa for joining us today. We hope these interviews give you a clear understanding of the candidates and their vision for our beloved island.
We'd like to take a moment to acknowledge the incredible support that made this series possible.
First, a big thank you to Hawaii Crop Improvement Association.
We also want to express our gratitude to the Hawaii Lodging and Tourism Association, our Kauai chapter, for their continued partnership.
A special thanks goes out to Hoikee, Kauai Community Television, for providing the platform to bring these interviews to you.
We are also grateful for the Kauai Island Utility Cooperative for their unwavering support of our community initiatives.
Thank you as well to KKCR, Kauai Community Radio, for helping us reach more of you across the island.
We couldn't have done this without the support of Kekeha Agriculture Association, who have been champions of local engagement.
And last, but certainly not least, thank you to Meridian Pacific for their generous support of this effort.
Remember, your voice matters. Make it heard. Be sure to vote in the upcoming election and help shape the future of Kauai.
Thank you again for watching. Ahoei ho.
Aloha and welcome to this special series of interviews with our Kauai County Council candidates. I'm Lexi Jones, the Vice Chair here at Hoikee Community Television.
And I'm Mark Periello, President at the Kauai Chamber of Commerce. We're honored to bring you these conversations, giving each candidate the opportunity to share their vision for our island.
Today, we'll be speaking with Mel Reposo, who's eager to share his ideas and plans for our community. These interviews are an important part of our democratic process and giving you a chance to learn more about who's running and why.
Our hope is that these conversations inspire you to engage in the process and to vote. Every voice matters and your voice is crucial in shaping the future of Kauai.
That's right. So let's dive in. Please join us in welcoming Mel to the conversation.
Aloha.
Hey, Mel.
And thank you for doing this.
We love it.
It's always fun.
And thanks to Hoikee for, for having us here, man. This is awesome.
Really, it's real deal.
Yeah, it is. It's, it's so difficult to reach a lot of people all at once, right? And so this is one way to do it. And so thank you for, for being here.
Yeah. Hoikee, hoikee.org.
So hey, our first question is, can you just, you know, tell the audience a little bit about yourself? And specifically, why you felt the need to take on the kulianna of leadership in our community?
Well, that's, it's not a very difficult question. I think everybody runs for public office or leadership roles because they want to make a difference. I've been blessed and I've been honored to have been able to serve this community. This is my 16th year, which is kind of long. I remember when I first started and Chair Kaipo Singh was there and I'm thinking, wow, man, this guy's been here forever. And now I look back and it's like, I've been here forever. But, you know, it was, I was never a political guy. I was, I was a cop and had really no interest in politics. And, and everyone gets to that point where any issue comes, is brought to your attention and you ask for help from the, the government leaders and you don't get the responses. And, and at that point, I decided that I was going to run and that was back in 1998. And I ran with absolutely no experience. And came number seven in the primary and I got scared, like, oh my gosh. Because I hadn't, I absolutely did not think I had a chance. It was seven incumbents running. But after the primary, I said, holy moly, let's go to work. We can, we can actually win this thing. And we didn't, we fell short, about a couple hundred votes. But then I got active in, in government, local government and started to follow issues. And then four years later, I, I ran again and I got elected. And I've been serving this community now for a long time. And the motivation is simply to try to make this place better. I think everyone knows by now that my two kids live on the mainland with my first grandchild. And it's rough when you see our families having to leave, not by choice, but because they can't afford to live here. So that just really makes me more motivated to, to continue to serve. And again, you know, the people of Kauai have been great. They've allowed me to do this for so long. And, you know, I just want to continue. Thank you, Mel.
I appreciate that because it'll segue us into the first question that we have, which is about our housing affordability. Kauai faces a significant challenge in providing affordable housing for its residents. The demand for affordable and workforce housing continues to outpace supply, while rising housing costs and the prevalence of off-island investment exacerbate the issue. The community has been exploring various strategies to address these challenges, including increasing the supply of affordable housing, providing rental assistance and supporting community land trusts. Here's your question. Given the ongoing housing crisis on Kauai, what specific strategies would you prioritize to increase housing affordability? And how would you work to implement these strategies as a member of county council?
Well, you know, this term, when, when I, I had a four-year break when I came back and I was, you know, again, honored to have been selected as a chair, my, my my vision was to, for this term, this current council, to really focus on the local people. You know, local does not mean a color. You know, a lot of people, you know, we get called racist or discriminatory when we say local, but local means you live here. Local means you live here full-time, not part-time, in my opinion. It's, it's, we have a lot of absentee owners, part-time owners. And that, that is part of the problem where our inventory, Lexi, you, you said it right. Our problem is we don't have inventory. It's basic economics, supply and demand. When your, when your supply is low, your prices go up. And it's incredibly high now. The median prices, you know, they range anywhere from, you know, 900,000 to 1.4 million for, for a home. No one can afford that. So on the council, what we try to do is, you know, there's many things we don't control. We don't control real estate. You know, we, we really control real property taxes. It's really the only, the control that we have. So we're trying to focus on making sure that we can keep our local residents against, again, our full-time residents in their homes. And we do that by keeping the real property taxes on homeowners low and on part-time or absentee owners high. And there is many programs for, you know, local residents that may own a second home or a third home. We definitely, we encourage that. If you can afford to, to build your, your empire in homes, but to benefit from the low income or from the low property taxes, then you must rent those out in an affordable range to our local residents. And that's, that's pretty much what we can do. But it's very hard when the market is where it's at and you have local families that are approached by outside people that, that are offering cash money. And then this, it's so appealing that they take the money and they sell their properties and they move. So, you know, we, the affordable marketing, the affordable housing market here on Kauai, I think Kauai does an excellent job. I think Adam Reversi and the Housing Agency, they do a great job with working with private developers, utilizing federal programs and, and tax credit financing to put up units. And I think Kauai leads, leads the state in putting up per capita affordable housing units. What's missing is that middle class. And what we did this year, we increased the property taxes on hotel and resort and vacation rentals. And that came with some opposition from the communities, but at the end of the day, we need funds in this county so we can purchase lands that are available before the billionaires buy them or the millionaires buy them. If we can secure the lands, then we have a much better chance at, at providing middle-class housing. You know, the school teachers, the police, the firemen, the nurses, the, the bellman at the, at the hotel and all of our people. Right now, we, we don't own land. The county doesn't have lands like many of the other counties. But if we have land, we can work with private developers to put up these middle-class housing opportunities for sale or rent. We can do it at a, at a range that the local people can afford. And the way we did that was by increasing taxes on hotel and resorts because they can pass their increases to the visitors. Same with the vacation rentals. See, when our local people's taxes go up, they have nowhere to pass that increases to. They eat it, which means they go get another job or they end up selling and moving. So we're trying real hard to figure out how we can create more inventory in all of the groups because it's sorely needed. Yeah.
So can I ask a quick follow-up question? Maybe it isn't quick, but a follow-up question nonetheless. So one of the things that becomes a challenge, you know, there's the, the parcel of land right over in Puhie by the gas station that, right, there, there's plans to maybe put some affordable or workforce housing in there. Local neighborhood folks were really unhappy about that for really understandable reasons. But, you know, it sort of prevents sometime, in many cases, right, the housing from going in. We see it start up in Kapaa. There was the arson out in LALA, Port Allen, which I'm assuming is motivated by people who don't want that project to go forward. And so how do you, how do we get more people on board with the fact that we need housing and it might be inconvenient for some folks?
Well, I, I think everyone knows we need housing. I mean, every, every resident of this, of this island is, it's no secret that we need more housing. We always have to deal with the, the not in my, my backyard, the NIMBY issue that, that happens regardless of what we want to do, whether it's housing or infrastructure. In the Puhie case, it's a little unique because those people have been there for a very long time. And when they purchased into that subdivision, there was a restriction from Grow Farm that said that lands would be preserved as a park. I think we as a county, I think we have opportunities to look at other properties that may not have that types of restrictions. And it's very hard to fault the residents that, that bought into that and understanding that there's already traffic issues in that corridor. And so while I understand what their, their complaints are, I mean, it is an opportunity for the county to develop some housing. I, I would suggest that we work with the, the larger landowners and try to find comparable pieces of land in that area. Because I think they exist. I think Grow Farm is, is really looking at getting rid of a lot of their lands as well as the, the new owners of A and B. The Canuts and Trust. I mean, these people have, have lands that are available. And I think that is why I go back to my, my last response regarding the funds. If we had a bank of funds, then we could go out and negotiate with these landowners and purchase these parcels. And it has to be near infrastructure because infrastructure is really very expensive in a new development. So, you know, that's why Puhie was so attractive because it's, it's right near all the water and the, and the wastewater and everything else. So it's always a challenge finding the right parcel, but I think there's many opportunities and I think we should take advantage of them. This, this property tax increase, which specifically targets those funds for middle-class property development, I think will, will be a great tool.
Great. Yeah, I agree. Nice. Thank you. So the next question is about economic diversification. So I just made nine years on Kauai this month and so, short timer.
Yeah, I know, right?
But for the past nine years and then the nine years before that, and probably the nine years before that, everyone's been talking about diversifying the economy and, and sort of moving away from dependence on tourism. Tourism is always going to be a part of, of our, our life here. It's an important economic driver and I don't see that changing. But what are your, some of your ideas about diversifying the economy? Right? You know, we could look at agriculture, technology, healthcare, renewable energy, the arts. Where do you see your priority, priorities in diversifying the economy?
Well, first, let me say that tourism is here to stay. And I think anyone that thinks we can wean ourselves off of tourism 100% is, is, is imagining things because that's not going to happen. I mean, we are a tourist industry. But we also have a potential for having an amazing ag industry. I mean, we, we are here, we're all here because of ag. All of us that's been here forever. We all were here because of the plantations and, you know, our families, our great, great, greats came and to work on plantations. And, you know, I, I think that is where we should move. I think we really should. And it, it does come with subsidies. That's how plantation stayed for so long. The sugar was here for so long because of government subsidies. And if we want to preserve the agricultural culture of this, this wonderful island, I mean, I think we've got to focus our attention, you know? Lidgate chocolates. His presentation at your governor's luncheon last week was phenomenal. We should be, we should be his largest supporter and cheerleader. We should, we should be. I mean, that, we, why can't we become the largest cacao plantation in the United States? We have Kauai coffee, largest We have Kauai Coffee, largest active coffee plantation in the United States. Why aren't we out there promoting more ag? The Agricultural Development Corporation, the ADC, they have so many lands available out on the west side and even towards our side. But their lands are fallow, their lands aren't being used because it's so expensive to lease the lands from our ADC. And I've spoken to the ADC director and I said, "You guys need to be incentivizing small farmers, getting people back in the ground, in the dirt, producing food for our island." And that's, I think, the direction we need to go because all of the other, the technology and the healthcare, those are all great. But when you look at the resources that we have currently with lands, there is no reason why this island should not be leading the country in ag. It's just we have, there's so many possibilities, tropical fruits, tropical flowers, our beef, our local beef. I mean, we have, we have the foundation, the blueprint. So we as a government should be encouraging and facilitating these industries for moving forward. We need slaughterhouses. We need to be helping our farmers and ranchers with resources so they can grow. And I think really that's the opportunity. We've tried the tech, high-tech, and in fact, we have a lot of people here that are working in high-tech, that are working remotely from their companies on the mainland. But we're not developing that industry here. It's very difficult because we're so far away. When you think about Hawaii in relation to New York or the East Coast, you get a six-hour time difference or five-hour time difference, very hard to do business. But it's still an option that I think needs to be explored. But if you ask me where we should attack, I would say ag. And let's get our farmers in the ground and let's get our ranchers to ranch. And two things, right? You develop an industry that's viable. And number two, you provide food sustainability for our people. It just makes total sense. It just makes sense.
Absolutely. Thank you, yeah.
Great, well, then moving forward into climate change and environmental sustainability. Kauai is particularly vulnerable to the impacts of our climate change, including coastal erosion, extreme weather events, and threats to our natural habitats. Addressing climate change and promoting environmental sustainability are critical for the island's future. Kauai has explored various strategies, including coastal protection, renewable energy adoption, waste reduction, and sustainable agriculture. So your question would be, how would you address climate change and promote environmental sustainability on Kauai? Please describe one specific project or initiative you would champion as a county council member.
You know, back, I mean, probably 10 years ago now, council member Joanna McMoran and myself introduced and got passed the nation's strictest coastal protection bill. And I'm very proud of that because everybody thinks Joanna and I were enemies. But no, we actually agreed on a lot more than we disagreed with. And over the years, that law has gotten soft. And I think, you know, we see, it's clear now, even to those that maybe at one time didn't believe in sea level rise and climate change, are seeing it right now. We're seeing it clearly. I think, you know, focusing back on our coastal protections is critical. We just, you know, Anini Beach, we just had a big discussion on Anini Beach that the landowner was actually encroaching on the state beach. Because initially, you know, when you buy your property, your property is so big. And then as sea level rise occurs, you know what? You lose your property and the beach is the state's property. So we were successful in getting that landowner to move all of his stuff off of the state beach and open up the beach for the public. But we need to do more of that because it's happening in many other properties around the island. But I think, you know, educating and making sure the public understands the dangers and as we start applying or approving permits for construction of structures, that we gotta take that into account. Our shoreline bill is strict and I think it could be stricter. You know, if you want to buy a shoreline property, you have to understand that it's going to come with some consequences, that you don't want to build it so close. And it's not about landowner rights. It's about, we're trying to protect your property and your life. So I think it's educating the people and making people understand why we do what we do. But it is real. And, you know, I've met with our congressional delegation as well as our state delegation because our highways are all susceptible to sea level rise. And what are we going to do when we got to move an entire highway inland? I mean, we need to have that discussion. So that's kind of where it's at. I mean, I think we got to be very aware and be willing to make those tough decisions as leaders at the local level, but more importantly, at the state and federal level because it's going to impact our residents tremendously.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and so the second part of that question though was sort of about environmental sustainability in general. I mean, I know that an issue that's important to you is the landfill. Is that something you want to share anything about?
How long is this show?
I know, right?
You know, the landfill is my largest concern. I lose more sleep with the landfill than any other issue. And I know people say, wow, what about housing? What about cost of living? This is an issue that I've been battling for a very long time, the landfill. Because if you don't know, our landfill is slated to be at capacity in three years. And yes, our administration is working on getting some permitting for expansions. But assuming we get the expansions, and it's not a guarantee because there's a lot of environmental concerns with this permit application because the west side, the water table is so shallow, it's a dangerous place to have a landfill, in my opinion. And so even assuming we get that permit to expand and go even higher, and in fact, one of the expansions is to go over phase one of the landfill, which is an unlined landfill. It's an unlined, there's no liner underneath, which I totally oppose. But even if we get that, we're looking at possibly another five or six or seven years. We don't have a plan for a new landfill or an alternative technology to deal with our waste. So that is a huge problem. It is, for me, again, it's my biggest concern because we don't have a solution, even if we get the expansions. Now, diversion obviously is one that we really got to focus on. And I think we're at the point now where our county doesn't have a choice but to really move forward with promoting diversion of trash to the landfill. That's the only thing we can do. Until we develop a technology that vaporize this stuff in thin air, we don't have many options. So it's, I'm frustrated. You know, we've asked for several briefings and there's really no aggressive movement to a resolution. And I'm concerned.
Understandably.
If you don't have a landfill or any way to dispose of your trash, I don't care what your plans are to build housing or anything else because you need your infrastructure in place to make all of these other opportunities possible. And we don't. And landfill is one, I mean wastewater as well as water. I mean, those three major infrastructural requirements are in bad shape right now. And I'm truly concerned. We had a briefing from the water department the other day. The five-year plan is over $200 million. We don't have $200 million. Over the next 20 years, it's over a billion dollars just to bring our water systems up to standard. And we're operating off of 100-year-old pipes, 100-year-old pipes. And we don't have many options. And that's why for me, the infrastructure is, should be everyone's priority right now. Because you can't have housing. You can't have housing if you don't have water. You can't have housing if you don't have wastewater. So I think we got to go back to basics and fix our infrastructure.
Thank you. So the next question is from me too. Well, visitors contribute to traffic congestion on Kauai. The surge in traffic when schools resumed in August underscores the impact of resident commuters on the island's transportation system. In addition to infrastructure improvements, Kauai has been exploring various efforts to reduce traffic congestion, such as expanding bus services, though they're limiting them at the moment, developing safer bike lanes, and encouraging walking through improved sidewalks and pathways. However, our island's rural nature and the dependence on cars presents unique challenges. Next page, and my question is on the next page, hold on a second. What solutions to ease traffic congestion on Kauai resonate most with you?
My answer is not a very popular one because, because like whenever we talk about this, I get the backlash from the community. But, you know, number one, our bus system, you cannot compare Kauai to San Francisco or Seattle or Portland. And I hear that all the time. In all my years, I hear, you know, we need a system like Seattle. Well, you don't, we don't have the ridership. You're not going to create that ridership. You know, unfortunately on Kauai, many people have multiple jobs. They got to pick up kids from school. They got to take grandma to the doctor or mom to the doctor or dad. So getting around this island on a bus system is almost impossible. I mean, and that's just the way it is and we're not going to change that. The big issue right now is we don't have bus drivers. You know, I got a lot of flack when the bus had to cancel their Sunday services. And to be honest, you know, of course, it's frustrating, but, you know, we got a heck of a transportation department. They do a good job, but if they don't have drivers, what can you do? And I say this all the time, if any of you are looking for work, go apply and be a bus driver. They pay well. It's a great job, but if we don't have drivers, we can't get the bus moving. And it was, when I spoke to the director and she had to share that news of closing down the Sunday service, I mean, she was emotional about it because she knows how important that bus is. But what do you do? You only have so many drivers and it's a problem. You know, I wish I had the authority for a day, you know? You adjust school schedules, you improve the school bus system, which they're running into the same problem as well. We got to get more cars off the road. And how do you do that? It's very hard when you live in a community, like in a rural community where you need your car because you're making so many stops. You cannot, you cannot live your day on a bus. So it's difficult. So having said that, you know, we have an amazing network of private lands that were once used by the cane trucks on this island. I believe that we need more lanes. And I know there's an argument, you bring more lanes, you're going to get more cars. No, see, we already have the cars. It's not going to get better, really. I mean, it's just not going to get better because we don't have enough travel lanes for our vehicles, whether they're buses. You know, you get, unfortunately, you get a car accident on the highway and you're heading to work, you're going to be late. If you got a plane, you're going to miss it. If you got a doctor's appointment, you're going to miss it. So, you know, I've always proposed utilizing the cane roads as alternate routes. And even if we did that just for emergency uses only, I think we could do it. And yes, it's going to come with a cost, but it can be done. And these private landowners, I think it would be beneficial for them as their lands get sold and developed in the next generation, they're going to need infrastructure as well, they're going to need roads. So let's partner with them. And if they don't want to partner, then let's go condemn their land and get it. I'm serious because, listen, we can talk about traffic all day long. We can talk about improving our bus system. We can talk about all of these biking, walking, and so forth. At the end of the day, we are not like the metropolis cities of the mainland where we have so many people that live and work in their area. It's just not going to work. I'm a realist. And it's tough being a realist that's a politician. But I don't know how else to be. You know, I don't see any other solution at this point other than to open up more lanes of travel, plain and simple. Not popular, but listen, you know, my cell number is on my county website. It's everywhere, everybody knows my number. If you have an idea and a better solution, I am open. I've been thinking and dealing with this for a long time. And I think we're at the point now, we got to make more lanes. And the state's not looking at doing a new highway. I don't think the state can afford to build a new highway. I've spoke to our congresspeople, even offered to name the highway after them if they can come up with the funds and do a nice inland highway that could go across and be so pretty. And it's not going to happen. So we as a county now got to take it upon ourselves to make it happen.
Thank you.
Great, okay, well, moving into the next question.
You looked a little surprised with that, Alexa.
Well, no, I just feel like it's such a big challenge and it all stems from the infrastructure need for one, but two, utilizing the routes that have been present, I don't see what could be such a large difficulty to implement that for emergency focus if we're going to stick to that avenue as well because they are, they just need additional TLC, like they are functional. They have been working for a long period of time. And so the conversation is really challenging because no one wants to expand the highway. No one wants to continue to have a highway in their backyard or in their front yard that you hear consistently throughout your entire night. And so I can hear that and understand that. So how do we make it better if we are not utilizing routes that are already present?
Yeah, you know, I learned long ago, you work smart, not hard. And unfortunately, common sense is not always so common, you know?
Well, and so that's why I was like surprised because the conversation is really difficult and I know many people are thinking about it as well. All right, so moving into more focus of agriculture and food sustainability, which you have mentioned a few times in our conversation. So agriculture has the potential to play a larger role in Kauai's economy by providing local food, preserving open space, and contributing to our economic diversification. However, challenges such as limited infrastructure, general disinterest from younger generations, and the need for startup financing persists. So what is your vision for a thriving agricultural sector on Kauai? And what actions would you prioritize as a county council member to support your vision?
Well, I think I covered that a lot earlier. And I think the county council has always supported the administration's request for funding for grants at agricultural sector. And we continue to do that. What we need more though is, we need more planning and more visualizing how this will happen. And, you know, our Kauai economic, our economic opportunities, Economic Development Division or Department really needs to get out there and figure out with the farmers. And to me, I think that's how you learn, right? I have no experience in farming, except my four-by-four raised garden bed that I did during the pandemic that produced enough food for me and several other people. I was amazed and never had any training, just YouTube. And, but getting with the farmers and the ranchers and figuring out what do they need? I know right now, for ranching, we need more slaughterhouses. And we need public slaughterhouses where ranchers can take their beef. Rather than right now, they're sending it off to the mainland to be grown or I forget, the fat end or whatever, and then slaughtered and then sent back. Oh, no, we need to have that all here. And we need help from the state and federal government as well. A county cannot afford all of these things, but the discussion has to happen as well as our farmers. I already mentioned, ADC, they need to be, that's a state agency. We should be incentivizing farmers. I can tell you, if you're a kid growing up and you're watching all these influencers on YouTube and Instagram making all this money and then you have another option here on Kauai to go get dirty and work really, really hard and make little money, I think the choice is obvious, right? So how do we make that attractive? Well, you know, it starts at our schools. But we got to have an environment that is welcoming to these people. Excuse me, we got to have that environment that kids will say, yeah, that's pretty cool. And I can make money. And you cannot have that if you don't have the infrastructure, like you just mentioned. We don't have the infrastructure in place to promote. So if there's a serious desire to promote agriculture here in Hawaii, yeah, we can. And it's going to come with some cost, but the return will be tremendous. Can you imagine if, you know, if the state came out with a law that said, just taking the DOE, if all of the schools, or even if you said, we're going to pilot this thing and 50% of our schools in the state are required to purchase 75% of their food for the kids locally? That would create a market, that would instantly create a market. Now, farmers says, my gosh, if I can sell my stuff here locally and have a constant income stream, then it becomes attractive. But no, we don't. Our kids are still eating stuff in school that is not coming from our state. Why? We're the Garden Island. So I think Kauai should be the pilot project for our state. I think we should start with Kauai. And, you know, unfortunately, the county doesn't have the authority. You know, we don't regulate schools, we don't have any say in schools. But, you know, we can be a voice and say, hey, state, let's just start 50% of the food that you serve has to come from local farmers and ranchers. I mean, I think that's a start. But we need to define this industry or redefine the industry. It's obviously not the sugar industry, but redefine it with what we have. And we've seen, you go to the craft, I mean, not the craft fairs, but the sunshine markets on our island, you see the variety of stuff you can buy now? It's amazing. And it's smaller scale, but, you know, our job as a state now and as a county is to enlarge that so it attracts more farmers, more of our local kids to get into farming.
Fantastic.
It takes a decision.
It does. So a number of years back, and I won't mention the elected official's name, there was an effort to do something like that at the schools. And I don't know what happened with it, it just sort of disappeared. And so if you want the chamber's support in this effort, just let us know. Yeah, it's a really smart way to diversify the economy.
Yeah, I think it all starts with learning from the farmers and ranchers, what would they need? What? What do you, what do you need to make this viable? What would it take for you to be able to expand and work with the colleges? And maybe even the high schools now. A lot of our high school kids are taking college courses and getting college credit. It's so different. What an opportunity to have kids come up and work on the farm to learn and find their purpose. There's many opportunities.
All right, so the last substantive question is about destination management and tourism. What are your top one or two priorities for tourism on Kauai? And, you know, as they're really, maybe to the Destination Management Action Plan, which aims to manage tourism in a way that benefits residents and visitors alike?
For me, it's preservation of our local resources, our natural resources, not taking away the ability for our local residents to enjoy the land that they live in. I mean, that, to me, is the most frustrating. And I think, you know, I've heard so much about the destination management. During COVID, you know, a movie came out, and everyone said, we're gonna change, and we're gonna, we're gonna find the right visitors that'll come and just spend money. And, yeah, you know, that's all good on paper. But I think the reality is, when you offer discount travel to Hawaii, Kauai is such a place of beauty, you know, Kalalau Trail, right? Unfortunately, that breakout of the virus. But, you know, so I've been on the mainland. I've seen the commercials that show for Hawaii. And it doesn't limit it to people that spend money. Those commercials are for everyone. Again, we, you gotta acknowledge that tourism is here to stay, and we need to respect that industry because it takes care of so many of our residents here on the island. I worked in tourism, I was a night auditor for 13 years while I was on the council. So I appreciate the industry. But also, I think the destination management plans need to focus on preservation of our natural resources and our community resources. And what they did out at Ka'aa Beach with the community, limiting the numbers of people that's going in, that worked. Now, what that did, though, it pushed more people to Haina and to Anini. So where's that balance? You know, I, one of the things I really would like to see, and again, this is gonna upset some people, but we have issued so many direct flight routes to Kauai from all over, and that changes, you know. You hear it, oh, now we're flying to Oakland, now we're flying to Vegas. And that's done without any input from the community. It's, boom, here you go, Kauai. And I think when the airport came out with a plan to expand the Lehu Airport, or when the state came out with that, the community stood up and said, no, we don't, we don't need no more, we don't need no more people. We got a lot of people coming in every day. So I've always advocated for a capacity study. Where are we on Kauai? Are we able to handle the number of visitors that we get on a daily basis on our island? There has to be a study like that made because our infrastructure, as we just shared, we talked so much about, is struggling. And what is our, what is our capacity? And it's, I think, to me, that's where you start the discussion. And when you reach that capacity, and then there's no more direct flights. And in fact, it may even show as these routes quit through attrition, then they don't get reinstated. But that capacity study is vital in any discussions. But again, it comes down to, I don't think any local resident, and remember my local, the definition of a local, right? Permanent full-time resident here. I don't care for how long, or basically, you live here and you're full-time here. You should never be deprived of the ability to go to a beach and enjoy beach time with your family and not have to deal with a crowded beach, cannot even get a parking spot. That is where I get a little frustrated.
Thank you for including me.
Yeah, you're local. You are. I mean, there's no time requirement.
No time requirement, yeah. Malahini for as long as I'll be here, I think.
Yeah, I mean, you know, but again, you know, we've been called some really negative words because we say local. But local means you live here and full-time. You contribute to the community. We love you, man, we welcome you guys.
Thanks, Mel.
Well, great. Well, as we come to a conclusion, is there anything else you would like to share with our viewers today?
I just wanna say thank you to the chamber. You know, I think education is key, informing and educating is always important. And you guys do this every election, and we appreciate you guys. You guys do so much for the community. And then Houike, I can never say enough of Houike because they are the only one now that is providing any source of information for the public. And it's not a, trying to initiate to the Garden Island newspaper, but it is what it is. Like I said, I'm a realist, I call it as I see it. And I have not seen an article in the paper regarding local government, local politics, local issues in a very long time. We got the Honolulu information, we got Honolulu stories and the presidential stuff. But, but the most important thing that I wanna share is that in the primary election, we had a 32% voter turnout, which is quite embarrassing. It's so convenient now. And when you get 32% voter turnout, that's 30, the minority of people on this island, the minority of voters are making the choices for your leaders. So folks, register to vote if you haven't registered. If you are registered, please vote in the general election. Whether you vote for me or not is irrelevant. We need you to vote, we need to get those numbers up to 75 or 80%, hopefully more. But then you get true representation from the people and the elected officials that get elected are elected by the majority of the voters here on the island. So again, thank you guys so much.
Yeah, thank you.
Appreciate you guys.
So mahalo nui loa for joining us today. We hope these interviews give you a clearer understanding of the candidates and the future they envision for our beloved island.
We'd like to take a moment to acknowledge the incredible support that made these series possible.
First, a big thank you to the Hawaii Crop Improvement Association.
Great. We also want to express our gratitude to the Hawaii Lodging and Tourism Association, our Kauai chapter, for their continued partnership.
And a special thanks goes out to Houike, Kauai Community Television, for providing the platform to bring these important conversations to you.
We're also grateful for Kauai Island Utility Cooperative for their unwavering support of our community initiatives.
And thank you to KKCR, Kauai Community Radio, for helping us reach more of you across the island.
We also couldn't have done it without the Ke'akahua Agriculture Association, who have been champions of local engagement.
And last, but certainly not least, a heartfelt thanks to Meridian Pacific for their generous support of this effort.
Remember, your voice matters, make it heard. Be sure to vote for the upcoming election and help shape the future of Kauai.
Thank you for watching, ahui ho. Aloha, and welcome to this special series of interviews with your Kauai County Council candidates. Mark Periello, President of the Kauai Chamber of Commerce.
And I'm Lexi Jones, the Vice Chair of Houike Community Television. We're honored to bring you these conversations, giving each candidate the opportunity to share their vision for our island's future.
Today, we'll be speaking with Ross Kagawa, who's eager to share his ideas and plans for our community. These interviews are an important part of our democratic process, giving you the chance to learn about more about who's running and why.
Our hope is that these conversations inspire you to engage in the process and to vote. Every voice matters, and your vote is critical in shaping the future of Kauai.
So welcome, Ross. Yeah, let's dive right in.
Thank you for having me.
Yeah, we're glad to have you here. Let's dive right in.
Yes, so please tell our audience about yourself and why you're taking on the kuliana of leadership in our community.
Well, you know, I'm 1984 graduate of Waimea High School. You know, I like to think we were, you know, successful at that time in, you know, sports and academics. And, you know, back then, I think our school, we had about 200, I believe, in each class. So our school, our school had about 900 students maybe at that time. Plantation was still going, but kind of, kind of tailing off. And, you know, so a lot of plantation, you know, residents and students during my time in 84. So, you know, a lot of history. Of course, that was the roots of our island, right? Plantation and, you know, all of the vast, hardworking people that were either poor or middle-class that lived on the west side. And, you know, now that has changed. We don't have as much plantation, but, you know, we still have that local roots that are all there. I went to UH University of Hawaii in Manoa, played college baseball there. And, you know, just really loved those years. Those years, we used to be on K5, public TV, all of our games. So, you know, we had some popularity there. Being on the UH baseball team at that time, we were nationally ranked and...
What position?
I was a left fielder. But, so anyway, so I went to UH, graduated in accounting, worked in the CPA field for maybe five years or so. And then I decided, well, you know, maybe I, accounting, sitting behind a desk, not talking very much to others, besides when doing audits. But, you know, it just felt like maybe that was it for me. So I went into, I got my degree in special education, and I taught at Chiefess Kamakaheli Middle School for two years and Kapaha High School for 18 years, and then at Waimea High School for three years. So been, you know, been through all the sides of the island. Kauai High School with Chiefess, you know, it's kind of like Kauai High, Kapaha High and Waimea High, you know, had those interactions. So I've been all around, you know, the island as far as my teaching career. Did driver's education for 10 years. So I've met tons of kids because everybody wants to get their license, right? When they're in high school. So, you know, I did 10 years of driver education at Kapaha. And I just loved that experience. You know, so then I said after, you know, back in 2012, I said, you know, maybe I can help make a difference in running for county council and trying to, you know, make sure that local people and our children have a good opportunity to live here like, you know, we did. And, you know, we, 12 years later, we're still making sure that that can still happen. So I continue to feel like, while I, I feel like I have, you know, served and I've worked hard and made a lot of relationships, that, you know, I feel like my voice is still, you know, relevant and that I do have the energy and passion more than ever to continue serving the people of Kauai.
Beautiful.
Yeah, thank you. So let's dive into some issues. So Kauai faces a significant challenge in providing affordable and workforce housing, as we all know. You mentioned, right, a lot of folks, you wanna make a future for people here on Kauai, especially local folks, but so many people are leaving because of the high cost of housing. And demand, right, for affordable housing and workforce housing continues to outpace supply, while rising housing costs and the prevalence of off-island investment exacerbate the issue. The community has been exploring various strategies to address these challenges, including increasing supply of affordable housing, providing rental assistance, and supporting community land trusts. Given the ongoing housing crisis on Kauai, what specific strategies would you prioritize to increase housing affordability? And how would you work to implement these strategies as a member of the council?
Well, I think, you know, we, we need to be more aggressive with the private sector and, you know, have those marked, just those regular, I would say, just workforce housing homes that come up. And, you know, currently, I think the county, our programs, as well as Habitat for Humanity, they only focus on those 60% or 80% below median income. You know, those programs are great and awesome. However, I think the workforce housing is a key problem that is being neglected. And that is just typical market-type homes, like such as the one in, one of the latest ones we had was a DHR10 in Honolulu, where, you know, people were complaining like, wow, the prices are like $850,000, you know, for a three-bedroom. And they were complaining about the advertisements. But if you drive around that Honolulu subdivision, you'll see that many of those residents are all local families, workforce housing families, born and raised Kauai families that purchased those $850,000 homes. And when you look at today's, you know, the latest news, they say, well, I think Kauai's, the average household price is like 1.2 million now. So, you know, really, the 850 is, you know, something that we need more of. And I'm not saying that I, that would be the floor, but I'm hoping that, you know, if we just have more of those type of subdivisions, that, you know, perhaps, you know, between the 700 and, you know, 900 range, we can have, you know, a lot of those type homes that just sell on a market. And like, it's a supply and demand problem that we have, and basic economics. We don't have enough supply, we have too much demand. And that's why you see fixer-uppers selling for over a million, or you see small houses in Ke'akahua selling for half a million. You know, so I mean, it's, and these are all fixer-uppers now. These are not, you know, so, yeah, they're, people say, when we talk about those situations, they say monopoly money. Because really, it's just, we have a supply and demand problem. So the highest bidder is winning, you know, those homes, and they have the means to pay, you know, monopoly money-type prices for these homes. And, you know, it's concerning. It's really disheartening when, you know, we hear like even Mel, you know, saying that his second grandchild away, and, you know, I've got, talking about council chair, second grandchild away, and they live all the way in El Paso, Texas. And it just hurts him and his wife that, you know, there isn't better opportunity on Kauai for his daughter to, you know, move back here with the grandkids and her husband. You know, and that's just one case. There are many hundreds or thousands of cases and more that are coming along like that, where, you know, the American dream, right, owning a home. They can do it maybe in Vegas, they can do it maybe in Oregon, they can't do it here. And it's really concerning. Our only way out is, I think, we gotta look at some of these adjacent ag lands next to existing infrastructure, possibly, you know, look at allowing developers to come in and, you know, build on those houses at market prices. And, you know, I think maybe that will take care of some of the supply-demand issue that we have. You know, if you get 80% even landing into local families and maybe 20% going to incoming minor residents, that's still success as long as the prices don't inflate to where they're like kukula-type, you know, prices. So, you know, as long as, like I said, I think local families have the means, their families are all in, all live here, they can help, some of them can help them with the down, help them with what have you, co-siting. And, you know, it can be done, but we just don't have adequate supply out there. And that is, that is a key issue. So, you know, it's gonna take collaboration between the mayor, the council, the representative, representatives, onoahu, the legislature, and a congressional delegation. Because this is not only a Kauai problem, it's a Hawaii problem that we have.
Well, count the chamber in, right? It's an important issue for us too, right? It affects all of our businesses. And for me personally, right, like I think it's important to preserve the culture of this place, right? I mean, so if local families are moving away, that's changing the way this place sort of is.
Right.
It's so important.
Absolutely. Continuing forward with the question now focused on economic diversification. Kauai's economy has long relied on tourism, which leaves the island vulnerable to economic downturns as we saw during the pandemic. There's a growing need to diversify the economy to create more resilient and sustainable economic priorities for residents. Potential sectors for diversification include agriculture, technology, healthcare, renewable energy, and the arts. So what is your vision for economic diversification on Kauai?
Well, I mean, one of Kauai Chamber's new members, and they've done a great job of, you guys have just stepped it up big time with the membership that Kauai Chamber has gotten. It's so wide and vast and so such a solid organization that you guys have built under your leadership.
I appreciate it.
Congratulations. But one of them, Alun Farms, I mean, they are just expanding, you know, so much, a lot of the products that they're trying and growing out in Kamakani-Pakala area. Recent talks of acquisition of Ke'akahua Strip. I know, you know, I think food resiliency, I mean, when you talk to native Hawaiians, they say, you know, where before all of us came, they say, we're raising our own food. We're, you know, food sustainable and, you know, we could do it then, we should be doing it now, where we're not reliant on things being shipped in. And, you know, to a certain extent, I mean, as much as possible, we should be, you know, trying to be food sustainable as much as we can. Got, you know, a lot of natural rivers and waterways that were in place by the plantations, and a lot of them still work. So, you know, I think it is possible to expand more, grow enough food and getting off, you know, reliance on, you know, bringing in especially produce and things like, you know, I think we can utilize even our wild boar that we have as a meat source. I think we have more people growing cattle, but we need to support that with food processing facility. I know we have Andrade's in Kalahua, and we have one in Wailea, our homesteads, but I think that's not enough. We still ship many of our calves to the mainland as they mature because we find it cheaper to profit off selling calves than processing the meat here because we don't have the proper facilities. So, you know, it just would make total more sense if, you know, and even for people from the mainland, right? Like when we go to Japan and eat Kobe beef, I think, you know, if we can have that in our local restaurants and say, hey, we can have that in our local restaurants and say, hey, this is some Kauai beef you're eating for dinner, and that's all we're going to serve on Kauai is local, you know, food. I think, you know, those are the type of direction that we can go, because I think our, our visitors, our residents, they want to taste high-quality stuff that is raised here and, you know, grown here. So, I think that's the no-brainer option is, you know, to, to expand on what Alun Farms has done, and to expand that even among small local farmers who do good farming at home. Give them opportunity, give them land to, you know, expand theirs and become a business. So, you know, I think we have all the knowledge right at our fingertips in our local people. And all we need to do is provide them with more opportunity as far as free land and sources to water. And, you know, I think, again, just working together with all agencies, I think, we've got to stop, you know, brainstorming great ideas and start making them happen.
All right. There you go. All right. Next question. Climate change and environmental sustainability. Kauai is particularly vulnerable to impacts of climate change, including coastal erosion, extreme weather events, and threats to national habitats. Addressing climate change and promoting environmental sustainability are critical for the island's future. Kauai has explored various strategies, including coastal protection, renewable energy adoption, waste reduction, and sustainable agriculture. How would you address climate change and promote environmental stability on Kauai? And can you describe one specific project that you would champion?
That's a tough one. You know, I think, for me, just being born and raised here, I mean, I've, I've seen the signs that climate change is affecting Kauai. You know, if you picture, you know, the drive out to Keikaha, you know, prior to hitting the neighborhood center, I mean, all of that coastline where you have a, you know, rock wall that is protecting the main highway, you know, those used to be, I mean, hundred, I mean, at least like 100 yards out of sand, and then you would have the ocean. And now the water is basically just banging against the rocks now. So, this was like in the 80s, you know, or 70s, 80s. I mean, there was, there was like, maybe 100 yards of sand, and then you had the water was, you know, and maybe, you know, sometimes it would get a little closer, but, you know, not to where it is now, where it's just actually right against the, the highway, and actually, you know, getting close to the, the homes, Maoka of the highway. So, it's scary, you know, and then, so what should we do? Of course, I mean, we should accept that it's not going to get better. It's only going to, you know, the, the trend is, it's only going to get worse. I guess, you know, doing all we can to protect our infrastructure and our homes, and, you know, respecting what's happening, and basing our studies, not, you know, 10 years down the line, but maybe 50 years down the line, so that we don't make stupid decisions, right? I mean, I don't want to say that word, but, you know, you don't want to spend a lot of money on infrastructure, not respecting the change that's happening. And then, when it happens, you'd be like, we just wasted a lot of money, and we could have done something, you know. So, those type of decisions, I think, just working with the mayor and the council being our voice to always question, you know, are we, are we, are we advocating for the changes that climate changes, that climate change is bringing? And then, you know, how do we do this project respecting, you know, what's happening, and then making smart and wise decisions?
Thank you.
Thanks. All right. Continuing forward with our mode of transportation and traffic congestion. So, that's big for everyone's thought process. While visitors contribute to traffic congestion on Kauai, the surge in traffic when schools resume in August underscores the impact of resident commuters on the island's transportation system. In addition to infrastructure improvements, Kauai has been exploring various efforts to reduce traffic congestion, such as expanding bus services, developing safer bike lanes, and encouraging walking through improved sidewalks and pathways. However, our island's rural nature and the dependence on cars is present and unique. What solutions to ease traffic congestion on Kauai resonate most with you?
Well, I think, you know, if you look at the time and effort and money that the state spent on the Kapaa improvements by Wailua Bridge going into Kapatao, I mean, that has had tremendous, you know, success. The traffic is far more improved from the bypass to the, through the bridges. And, you know, it flows through Lihue pretty good, even on peak times. There are occasions when, you know, it's a little, little slow, but it's not nearly, you know, as bad as Oahu. So, I think, you know, taking some of that knowledge, applying that to the West Side traffic now, perhaps we can, you know, ease congestion by improvements, you know, to the Kalahill Traffic Light Area, perhaps a large, a beautiful functioning roundabout, maybe an option, but something, something that will improve it, because right now, that area is getting really bad. And then the Tunnel of Trees area in Koloa also, you know, there, there are options to, I believe that the state can pursue to have the Kipu bypass opened up from, that'll take traffic from Koloa to Puhie. And, you know, so it's a one-lane cane hall road that I believe can be an option for a one-way traffic to ease the Tunnel of Trees traffic. But if you don't do one, then there's no sense you do the other. It is, so we need to address the Kalahill one. And then, while we are addressing the Kalahill one, let's figure out a way to utilize that one, one-lane road to, to take off the Koloa traffic from adding to the congestion on the West Highway. So, I think, you know, there are some options. The other option, you know, I wave signs twice a week. I religiously been saying, I'm going to work harder than I did the last election. So, I hold on the east side, one, one time a week, I hold for the West Side traffic, one time a week by Puhie. And there is an enormous amount of visitors driving on the roads. So, I think, what can we do? Again, you know, we need, we need the private sector to figure out a way that'll make it, I mean, it's not cheap, right, for them to rent these cars. There has to be a way that we can get people going in the common areas, you know, either on a shuttle, Uber-type, or something. There, there is a profitable business out there for, you know, local residents. I mean, but, you know, again, I think government needs to come up with a suggestion or a way of helping them to get started. And, you know, I, I mean, if we can get some of those visitor cars, you know, off the road, it'll definitely help as well. And, I mean, I would say, I don't want to say 50%, but a number close to 50% I believe is visitors on the road as I'm waving. Not to be like, expert, like, judge on it, but you can kind of tell, you know, you can kind of tell, like, they're really friendly when they wave at the other side. And it's great, you know, they, the, the thing about our visitors is, you know, they, they, they're just enjoying what, if we lived in the mainland, turn the shoes around. If we lived on the mainland, and we had an opportunity to go and relax and bring our family, Kauai would be the perfect spot. So, we can't, can't hold it against our visitors. They've got to respect them and treat them well, because they're really, right now, they're, you know, they're, they're most important to us to survive on Kauai.
Absolutely. Thank you. So, I mean, you talked a little bit about food sustainability, but our next question is actually about agriculture and food sustainability. So, it might be a good chance to add anything you haven't said. But agriculture has the potential to play a larger role in Kauai's economic, economy by providing local food, preserving open space, and contributing to economic diversification. However, challenges such as limited infrastructure, general disinterest from younger generations, and the need to start, and the need for startup financing persist. What is your vision for a thriving agricultural sector on Kauai? And what actions would you prioritize on the county council to support your vision?
Man, you know, it's so hard. Like, I just think, whatever, I think we need to look closer at, like, you know, success of our farmer, farmers' markets, and, you know, see what products we have being sold there consistently from our local farmers, and helping them to expand, or asking them, what can we do to expand what you're growing, so that we can, we can rely less on the mainland sending it, or, you know, or even other islands sending it. If we can grow it here, I mean, it just, I mean, to feed our, our people and our families, we're so much more sustainable, you know. We're like one, you know, bad hurricane away from our shipping lanes being, you know, stopped for a while. I mean, you know, it'll be disastrous if we don't improve in that area. So, I think, you know, just, again, a lot of farmers, they, they know how to farm, they know how to teach, you know, how to farm. I mean, I've seen successful programs like Waimea High School, Greg Harding, what he did back there just blew me away, the, the kind of stuffs he grew with the kids. And, you know, the kids, I think now, the students now, they're kind of, a lot of the local ones are like, being, like, re-energized as far as in their past. And, you know, especially those of Hawaiian descent, you know, they're really looking back to their culture, and more, more so than their parents. You know, I think their parents was busy working, and now, like, they're kind of thinking back, like, you know, how can we go back to old Hawaiian days as far as things like food, and taro, and kahlo, and, you know, and appreciating the old Hawaiian ways, and, you know, and how hard it is, but how rewarding it is, you know, to, to plant and raise kahlo. So, I think those, we have, we have the energy, we have the, you know, the knowledge, but I think we need our county government to maybe help lead the way to do it. Cannot, again, we cannot just talk about it. I mean, let's actually put it in play, because it's a, it's a no-brainer. You know, if we can come more food sustainable, it'll be, it'll put Kauai on the top of all islands.
And just to add, if the Kiki are feeling so empowered to have these practices, do you think that it could boost this sort of agriculture food sustainability if the Kiki or, or the young adults are feeling more empowered to do that?
Oh, definitely. Yeah. I mean, you know, our time, I mean, we had, we had an egg program, but, you know, we were already, our parents and our friends' parents were all like, working for the plantation. So, you know, I don't think, when we were going to school, we talked much about, you know, importance of egg and stuff, because, you know, that's the way we lived, I think. But now, more than ever, I think, you know, a new generation, you know, and I have grandkids, too, and I had kids that are now, you know, young parents, but, you know, we kind of like, I would say, baby them a little bit. But, you know, I think now we got to go back to showing them the reward of working hard, getting your hands dirty, and, and seeing, you know, what the process is, because, you know, not everybody's going to be a doctor, not everybody's going to be a CPA, not, you know, we, we need people that will just love doing something sustainable, be a small business owner that, you know, can grow food and be successful in those ways, you know. I think we get caught up sometimes that, oh, we've got to, you know, get our kids to be a certain line. But, you know, sometimes something as basic as growing food can be a great career, and can be more impactful to the island than, you know, other professions. So, I think, you know, it's, it's something that, I think, the high schools try to push, and they try to push, you know, all the time. But, you know, when you get teachers leaving like that, sometime it slows on the program again. And that's kind of what happened at Waimea, but.
Absolutely. All right. Well, continuing forward, another sort of pivot in our destination management. Kauai Destination Management Action Plan, DMAP, aims to manage tourism in a way that benefits residents and visitors alike by promoting sustainable practices and enhancing community engagement. What are your top one or two priorities for tourism on Kauai, especially as they relate to DMAP?
Well, I have, like, don't have much, you know, knowledge on, you know, suggestions that I would have, really. I just think that I do have a urge to, again, it's a state function, but I do have an urge to want the harbors to do some improvements, so that going forward, heading into the future, we have better facilities to, you know, help with our tour activities that we use. Like, you know, Kauai, for Kauai, like Kikiola in Keikaha, that's, you know, basically, that's just a residential fishermen, you know, going out farming, fishing type of harbor. But, you know, in that, they've authorized, I think, 25 tour boats to go out of there, you know, daily with multiple boats. And that harbor is just not made, you know, to, well, wasn't made. It, it does do it every day now, but it wasn't made to, to do that. It wasn't planned out with the parking, with the bathroom facility. So, I like to see upgrades in, in that area, so that, you know, we have facilities that match our uses. And I think we even allow, we allow a couple out of Adini. And, you know, it's really like, again, just makeshift, like, it's not meant for the activities that, you know, could, could possibly be there or be expanded. Like, I just went to Kona Boat Harbor, and that facility, I mean, is just, the amount of money the state put into that, it's just beautiful. It's a lot of parking, it's, you know, it promotes local fishermen having an easy time, you know, going out and fishing and having, you know, I guess, successful fishing practices. And, and again, fishing is part of our food sustainability. So, you know, having resources to support our, our local fishermen is, is important for me.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah.
So, last question.
Yeah.
Is there anything else you'd like to share with our audience today?
No, I mean, I just, I want to thank Huaueke for all the service you guys do. We don't thank you guys enough. Just always being there for the community, free, you know, of course, to the viewers, and just, just keeping our local politics in mind, local events in mind. And then, the chamber, again, you guys are an amazing organization, and you guys are being so good to the community. And I just thank you guys, because without you guys, we wouldn't be as, where we are. So.
I appreciate it.
Yeah. Thank you.
Mahalo nui aloa for joining us today. We hope these interviews give you clear understanding of the candidates and the future they envision for our beloved island.
We'd like to take, well, first, thank you, Ross, again.
Thank you.
Yeah, right?
She was a great.
Yeah. And we'd like to also take a moment to acknowledge the incredible support that made this series possible.
Oh, first, a big thank you to our Hawaii Crop Improvement Association.
We also want to express our gratitude to the Hawaii Lodging and Tourism Association, Kauai Chapter, for their continued partnership.
A special thanks goes out to Huaueke Community Television for providing the platform from these important conversations.
We're also grateful to Kauai Island Utility Cooperative for their unwavering support of our community initiatives.
We could not have done this without the Keikaha Agricultural Association, who have been champions for local engagement.
And thank you to KKCR, Kauai Community Radio, for helping us reach more of you across the island.
And last, but certainly not least, a heartfelt thanks goes to Meridian Pacific for their generous support of this effort.
Remember, your voice matters. Make it heard. Be sure to vote in the upcoming election and help shape the future of our beautiful island.
Thank you again for watching. Aloha and ahuiho.
Huaueke Kauai Community Media's president and CEO is Legor Gaines. Administrative Assistant, Lego Someda. Production and education services by Roger Olson. Production and IT services by Max Richardson. News and events producer, Tricia Allen. County producer and social media manager, Olivia Franco. Huaueke's Board of Directors include Chair Adam Reversi, Vice Chair Lexi Jones, Secretary Nathaniel Eveslin, and Treasurer Jackie Kina. Additional directors include Lea Awohe, Lori Barrett, Rod Green, Teek Rubiano, and Taylor Young.